Good evening, I'm Tamecula Mayor Mary Ann Edwards and I am here ready to call the city council meeting to order. So we have this evening for our invocation Sylvester Scott of Temecula, Bahai Community. Hi Sylvester, we haven't seen you in a while.
Yes, Mary Ann, how are you?
I'm good.
We're all sequestered.
We are all sequestered. So you're going to do the invocation and then I will give the flag salute, okay? So if we could all stand for the invocation.
And before I do the invocation, I just wanted to make mention it's an honor to be with you. And the Bahai prayers do not end in amen. So sometimes there's some confusion over that, so I just wanted to give some clarity to that.
I was ready Sylvester.
So about ten fifteen seconds.
Okay.
In the name of God, the Lord of overpowering majesty, the all compelling. Hallowed be the Lord in whose hand is the source of dominion. He created whatsoever he willeth by his word of command be, and it is. His hath been the power of authority, his afford and show remain his hereafter. He make it victorious whomsoever he pleases with the potency of his behest. He is in truth the powerful, the almighty. Unto him pertaining all glory and majesty in the kingdoms of revelation and creation and whatever lie between them. Verily, he is the potent, the all glorious. From everlasting he hath been the source of indomitable strength and shall remain so unto everlasting. He is indeed the Lord of might and power. All the kingdoms of heaven and earth and whatever is between them are God's. And his power is supreme over all things. All the treasures of earth and heaven and everything between them are his. And his protection extendeth over all things. He is the creator of the heavens and the earth and whatever lie between them. And he truly is a witness over all things. He is the Lord of reckoning for all that dwell in the heavens and on earth and whatever lie between them. And truly God is swift to reckon. He seteth the measure assigned to all who are in the heavens and the earth and whatever lie between them. Verily, he is the supreme protector. He holdeth in his grasp the keys of heaven and earth and of everything between them. At his own pleasure does he bestow gifts through the power of his command. Indeed, his grace encompasseth all. And he is the all-knowing. Say, God suffice it unto me. He is the one who holdeth in his grasp the kingdom of all things. Through the power of his host of heaven and earth and whatever lies between them. He protecteth whomsoever among his servants he willeth. God in truth keepeth watch over all things. Immeasurably exalted art thou, O Lord. Protect us from what lies in front of us and behind us. Above our heads, on our right, on our left, below our feet. And every other side to which we're exposed. Verily thy protection over all things is unfailable.
Thank you Sylvester. Now if you repeat after me with your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Madam City Clerk, could we have the roll call please? Yes, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
I'm here.
And Councilmember Stewart.
You bet.
Thank you, Stu. Well, we have a real treat this evening for presentations and proclamations we have with us are wonderful and new. Oh, she's not new at the district, but she is the newly named, appointed by the Board of Governors. The superintendent of Temecula Unified School District, Jody McClay. And she's going to give us an update on the district. It's been a very challenging year at the district, I can say, huh Jody?
That's an understatement, right, Mary Edwards? But I think everyone can relate, whether or not they're a parent, or a teacher, or a student, or a community member. We have all endured this, it has been a long year. But I think the light is shining at the end of the tunnel, for lack of a better analogy. So I told her I have about five minutes or so, a quick update on where we're at. And then if you have questions, I'm always available and happy to answer them. I will go quickly, as you know, we're a district of about 28,000 students, about 3,000 staff. We're the second largest employer in Temecula, so that's kind of a source of pride for us. Our world changed, as did everyone's, on March 13th last year. In fact, we're coming up on the one-year anniversary. I could show you in the next room where I was standing when someone walked in and said, well, we just got a call from the state and we actually have to shut down for a couple of weeks. And I thought it was a joke, I said, okay, there's no way, I've been in this business for 30 years. We don't close public schools, especially in California. And we used to tease, if we were on the east coast or in certain states, we could close for a snow day. But we've never even gotten to do that in California. And so when we were first told you're going to shut down for a couple of weeks, we literally thought, okay, this will be an interesting couple of weeks. If you'll recall, it was the week before spring break. And so we thought, well, for one week, we can deal with this. And the students have a natural break for two weeks of spring break, and then we'll be able to come back. And never in our wildest dreams did we think we would be sitting here 12 months later having written, I believe at last count, we're at about 10, maybe 11 full-fledged reopening plans. And when I say reopening plans, that's not just like a one-page document, that's like a hundred-page document for all 27 school sites, all 28,000 students, all 3,000 employees, for what a return to in-person learning might look like. And so fortunately, knock on wood, we are so super hopeful that we have written our final plan for this endeavor. It just got county and state approval this past Friday, and that's the official or the latest plan in the midst of all of these COVID reopening plans. It's called the COVID Safety Plan, the CSP. And like I said, ours was finally approved just this last week. We are scheduled to transition to what we're calling in-person offerings. And I think it's important to point out that it's a transition phase. This isn't the be-all and-all until our doors are open five days a week, full-time for any child who wants to come back to school full-time. We are considering in a transition phase. But we are on schedule to reopen our elementary sites on Tuesday, March 16th. The schedule officially begins Monday, March 15th, but because that's an asynchronous day, students won't come onto campuses until Tuesday. And that's just a week from today. So lots of butterflies from people who are nervous and anxious, and we've had our heads working around the table, trying to figure out every logistical issue, how we can keep every child six feet apart, wearing a mask, with all kinds of safety protocols like ingress and egress, how they even get from their car when their parent drops them off to the campus. How do our little kindergartners even know where to go? They've never been on campus. And so lots of special programs and things in the works to get our students familiar with this. They'll spend the last nine weeks on our campuses on a part-time model. And that's the biggest question we get, a lot of folks say, why part-time? Why are they only coming back to school for a few hours every day in a half-day format? And the answer is super simple. Unless we have twice the number of classrooms and twice the number of teachers, we can't limit the number of students in the class in a district this size. And so really, it just comes down to numbers. And so as soon as either the social distancing requirements decrease, or we're allowed to put more students in each classroom, we can't go above these numbers of hours in the day. So that's why your elementary kiddos will be coming to school for a half a day, basically, and then they'll learn from home the other half. It's interesting to note, we surveyed our families again just a couple of weeks ago. 68% of our families feel comfortable sending their children back to school in this model. 32% for a variety of very reasonable, rational reasons prefer to keep their children online. Some of our students we found are actually doing better online. The system really supports their interests and their learning styles. Other students, it has not worked well at all, so it really varies. So we were pleased with those results, that we've got just under 70% coming back and a little over 30% choosing to stay online for the remainder of this year. Our secondary students, we still are calling it a tentative reopening date, and that will be on Tuesday, April 6th. It's officially Monday, April 5th, but because again, Monday's an asynchronous day, students will come on the campus until the 6th. The reason that's still tentative is because we have to get the case rate below seven in Riverside County. But as I'm sure you're all aware of, today it went down to 8.3. So I really believe we're going to make it, unless there would be some kind of a surge or a change in the mandates coming out from the state or the county. So when secondary comes back, they will also be coming back on that split model, where they'll basically be working with teachers half the time, and then asynchronous the other half the time. And again, it comes down to numbers. When you have high schools with almost 3,500 students in the student population, you can't have that many on campus at one time. And so they will also be in a split model. The other thing that I just wanted to talk briefly about was athletics, because we get a lot of questions about athletics. And that's been a real big deal this past year. For many of you who have student athletes, you know that our kids have not been able to formally practice or see their athlete peers or compete for quite some time now. So only season one sports, which were cross-country, I believe, was the one that was allowed in the purple tier. They've been going for a few weeks, we actually had a couple of meets, which were really exciting to see those kids in action. Season two sports began a few weeks ago, and that was tennis in our area. And again, this is all set by the state, the county, and CIF. And then just recently, we were given permission to do the outdoor, what are called high-contact and outdoor moderate contact sports. And that means we were able to start soccer, football, baseball, cheer, and water polo. And so those have all begun recently, and that's because they're allowed in counties within the purple or the red tier with an adjusted case rate less than 14. So again, as you all know, those adjusted case rates have become really kind of our baselines, and those are the numbers that we are watching. So we're excited to be offering sports. As I'm sure you know, we've got some competitions and some batches and some games coming up, so it's going to be a first in a long time. We are following the state, the county, and the CIF regulations for observers. And so there will be some limitations, it's people from the household, they have to be wearing masks. There will be a separate area for our observers or our spectators. We recognize that parents want to see their kids play, we understand that, but we also know that we've got to keep people safe. We already, knock on wood, had to quarantine two of our teams just within the last 24 hours because of a student testing positive. And so we're really trying to emphasize that, you know, we could lose these abilities as quickly as we were able to reinstate them. And so we just need folks to adhere to the protocols, to follow all the rules, and do everything we possibly can to keep everybody safe, so that we're allowed to stay open once we are open. So that was a lot, but I tried to keep it short, I'm happy to answer questions, and I just, I want to reiterate how much we appreciate the city's support. I know Mayor Edwards and I work together quite frequently, but Erin, thank you so much for everything you've done for the district. The weekly city meetings that we've held with city leaders have been invaluable for us as a school district to really make sure that we're all working towards the same goals. And that is to keep people safe while getting things open as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Jody, did you explain what an asynchronous day was?
That's a great question, okay.
I get, my ears are burning because I know that people.
Do you want to share?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so basically synchronous means when a student is working directly with a teacher, and that can be in-person. So kind of like most of us probably went to school in a classroom with a teacher, that would be called synchronous learning. That could also happen online, if I'm sitting behind my computer, but I'm working right there with my teacher on the other side of the screen. And my teacher's either giving me a lesson, or my teacher might be listening to me read, or questioning me on something. If the teacher is there working with me, that's called synchronous. And for all schools and all programs, whether or not the parents and the students choose online or in-person, we have the same number of synchronous minutes. And that's really an equity issue, we want to be sure that regardless of which program our families choose, their children are getting the same amount of time with their teachers. And then conversely, obviously asynchronous would mean if you're not working directly with a teacher. So in a classroom, it could mean that the teacher's working with another group of students, and you're operating something on your own. Or it could mean if you're at home and you're doing homework, or you're doing independent work, but your teacher is not on the other side of the screen.
So that one-on-one really does make a huge difference for students. And I think that's been one of the most difficult things for teachers and for students. I know our teachers are, really want to get back to work and they miss their kids desperately. And so I know everybody I've talked to can't wait to get back to work, so.
You know what, I'm so glad you mentioned that, Mayor Edwards, I forgot to mention that just today, we have signed MOUs with both of our associations. And so all of our staff is ready and eager, ready to pile in on Tuesday morning.
Yeah, we're glad, so anybody have any questions? It's a huge undertaking. It's like trying to move Noah's Ark on land.
Yeah, we've had some fun analogies.
Yeah, well, thank you, Jody, and I'd like to have you come, you know, we're in the spring now, so maybe one more time before the end of the year, depending on, you know, what the upheaval is, or, you know, how we're getting back to school. Because things change, some days they changed every five minutes. So, you know, we can't get enough information at this point. And I'm really keeping my fingers crossed for a real graduation for our, some of our seniors, if we can. You know, it's been a rough couple of years, they were juniors and now they're seniors, so they'll have something to tell their kids, anyway.
Yeah, we're working on those end-of-year activities for all of our kids, but particularly our seniors, kind of that rite of passage.
Well, I think everybody appreciates that, so, well, thank you so much, and, you know, give our regards to everyone, I'll probably talk to you tomorrow.
Got it, well, thank you for having me, and I'm happy to come back anytime.
Oh, we'd love it, hey, thanks. All right, so we're going to move on to board and commission reports. And the first one I have on my list is community services commission, so it's Eric.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Hi.
Are you feeling lucky?
Always.
Well, this Friday, March 12th, at 7:00 PM, you can grab your fiddle and get ready to jig during our virtual St. Patty's Day concert, featuring Celia and Mulligan Stew. It'll premiere on Facebook at Temecula Parks and Rec. We also have a new event, Step Into Spring 5K. And it's time to get out and get moving during our Step Into Spring 5K. Participants will complete this 5K at their own pace, location, and time, which is awesome. And that all starts March 21st. And for more information and to register, visit temeculacaa.gov. And lastly, we have Extravaganza. This five-day teen giveaway, social media event, will present Temecula teens aged 13 to 18 with trivia, challenges, and/or tasks. Teens can win amazing prizes from gift cards, to Sony headphones, and even a TV. The Extravaganza Challenge runs March 22nd through 26th. And make sure to follow us on both Facebook and Instagram at Temecula Parks and Rec. That's all I have for you tonight.
Never ceases to amaze me how much community services and you all get done. Just as a former O'Toole, we really look forward to St. Patrick's Day every year. So I just may bring my fiddle and come on down and do the, you know, the Irish jig with you. So thank you, Eric.
That would be awesome.
Ron Gario, are you here for planning?
I am, Madam Mayor and Council. And that was the fund commission, and now this is the work commission. Okay, so I got at least one laugh out of you. I just want to say a few things first. First of all, a city as beautiful as Temecula doesn't happen by accident, we all know that. It starts with great planning, and that planning starts at council level, whether past or present. Starts with all of our various departments, be it community development, public works, community service, traffic, and all the staff people that go with it. Tonight I want to talk a little bit about community development. First off, I want to talk about our leader in Luke Watson. Luke has grown up in this city, he knows it very well, lives here with his family. He's a great leader, he's a great educator for us, and one of the best I've worked with in the 30 years. Our planning manager, Stuart Fisk, is another longtime employee. Great person, very knowledgeable, very dedicated, never hesitates to answer questions from the planning commission regarding any kind of a planning matter. Our associate planners, again, been here for years, know this city very well, they're extremely knowledgeable, very dedicated, especially during these past hard, past hard year. And again, they sometimes take months and years to get a project prepared to move forward for approval process. So it's a real pleasure working with all of them. And lastly, we have a representative from our city attorney's office who keeps us in the loop on such things as the ethics laws, and Public Brown Act, the Public Records Act, Californian, California Equality Act. Just all the rules and regulations and state mandates that we have to abide by in order to get a project through and approved. So that said, it's, you know, it's a pleasure to work with all of them, and we get along extremely well as a group. So my 30 years as a traffic and planning commissioner in Temecula, I've had the privilege of working with many of those staff personnel. And like I said, they're extremely knowledgeable, dedicated, not an easy job to do, given all the state mandates, rules, and regulations that they have to work with. Also in all those years, I've worked with many citizens who have volunteered their time on various boards and commissions. And great folks, but I got to say, none as good as the four I'm working with now. These people have all worked on previous commissions and boards, worked within the school district, other areas. They are very involved in the community, and we listen to our citizens, we listen to their comments, their concerns, sometimes their criticisms. And we're able to bring those forward to staff and come to some type of resolution, something that works the best for the city. Again, not something that's easily done, given all the regulations we have to work with. So that said, I want to move forward with our presentation. And we're going to do this a little bit differently this year. Each commissioner will introduce themselves and talk about certain segments of what we approved.
Actually, Commissioner Gario.
Hello.
Hi there, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but we are actually just at the board and commission reports portion, we're not at the annual joint meeting portion. But it's not far. But it's not far. So this is really the opportunity for you to report on the March 3rd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. But we loved everything you said so far. And we'll carry that over after public comments and city council reports.
Okay, well, there it is. March 3rd. Unusual for the planning commission, there were no items for the March 3rd hearing.
Really?
So items coming up on March, March, April, and May, including this will code Title 17 updates, which will cover multiple summer's been home product reviews, which I'm going to cover, et cetera. So let's move on.
All right, thank you, that was really good for a non-report.
Not bad for a start, though.
That was good. Mr. Hagel, good evening for public traffic and safety. And if, if community services is the fund commission, and the planning commission is the working commission, I came from traffic, you know, I always thought we were the fund commission.
Well, we're at least the safety commission, but safe fun.
Yes.
So I'll keep this brief so that Ron doesn't lose his momentum. We did two things at our last meeting two weeks ago. One is we're working on our joint meeting for coming up, the next city council meeting. And the second thing we worked on was with Jennifer, providing input on the budget for 2021, 2022. And a number of things that we discussed, I think the first thing, and something I think everybody brought up on the commission, was that safety is first in this city. And I'm going to use the word continue quite, quite a bit here, because we've done a lot of the things that we think we should be doing. And so first is to continue to commit resources where the issues are. As the city goes through its changes, and will continue to go through changes over time. A couple of good examples of that is how we responded with the homeless issue with the hot team, both in the police department and with the city staff. The other is more recent, which is our all-town team that is being put together for working our all-town issues. Something else that's going to be very important to us as we move forward, and has been somewhat important, but I think it's going to pick up a lot more, which is technology. And is continuing to stay ahead of the game in the world of transportation technology. We see things like traffic signals that can communicate with vehicles. That is just something that's starting, and we're going to see a lot more of that over the next couple of years. We are putting in new communication systems, new controllers. We will have the ability to communicate with cars, which will help to smooth out traffic, help to reduce the number of stops that cars have to make by communicating with them. A couple of other things is that we're going to have to do, and we've already started doing, is doing striping for cars to be able to drive themselves. Self-driving cars rely a lot on the striping on the roads to know what lane they're in, and staying in those lanes, and doing it safely. So there will be a lot more technology that will change very quickly over the next four, five, six years, and we want to stay ahead of that. Something else that I think is very important that we've done is our emergency signal preemption system. Sometimes called Opticon, which is some kind of a general word for a type of device that's up there. And we've, our system is now, is working properly. When one of the Opticons fail, they are repaired quickly, and it's something I couldn't say was the case probably 10 years ago. So I, you know, Pat and his group has done a great job of keeping them going. And particularly with the amount of traffic that is developing in the area, Opticon is very important to keep all of our safety personnel safe. As well as those on the road. To continue to bring a good balance of tools and solutions for neighborhood traffic calming, Pat and his team has done a great job at that. I think we have right now a really, really good balance of tools that can be used for reducing speeds, solving other issues within the community related to traffic. And the last thing is, I'd like to see us create a goal that our roadways will be maintained to the same level as our parks. And yes, Kevin and Pat, that is a compliment. Our parks are unbelievable, I mean, I don't think there's probably a city in Southern California, if not all of California, that has parks like, like we have. Roads is a very difficult thing to keep maintained and hole-free, particularly with the number of utility companies that are digging up the streets to improve service. And in a growing city, that happens, you know, much more frequently than we like. I know it's difficult for Pat and his team when we just finished relaying a brand-new road, and two weeks later, it's being dug up to put in some new piping. So it's something I know we can't control 100%, but I think it's a great goal to have, is to, is to shoot for our roads being kept up as good as our parks are. And a couple of very specific things that I had was, one was Inez Road north of Winchester, was to do a lot of repair work on that, as well as Margarita north of Winchester. And I found out, I was hoping that could get into the budget for next year, but found out that it's already been done, or already under in-process, which is kind of the Temecula way of doing things. The other thing that I had asked about was the walking path on Pobba from Margarita, heading, heading the eastern direction. And I walked on it two days after, and it was all redone. That happened to be a coincidence, because our, the Palma del Sol HOA redid it. But again, it's, it's Temecula way of doing things. So that's, that's, you know, some of the input that we gave, and we'll be talking a little bit more about what we hope to accomplish in the coming year, in the coming years, actually, at our next. in the coming year and coming years, actually, at our next, um, joint meeting with city council, which will be in two weeks.
So thank you. Thank you, Bob. I, I think you have a fun report. All right, we have our public safety report. Chief Crater, how are you?
Good, Madam Mayor, how are you?
Good.
Good. Uh, thank you. Um, do we have it up?
Here it comes.
Perfect. All right. In the city of Temecula for, uh, February two thousand and one. Uh, calls for service, uh, the Temecula Fire Department ran six hundred and ninety-nine calls. Uh, total of eighteen fires, five hundred and twenty-three medical, uh, related calls and fifty-two traffic collisions. Um, there's some others in there. Uh, you could see our, uh, ring and alarm uh, rate is down to four now, which is a huge improvement, uh, since the ordinance passed. So that's some good news. And I will get into, uh, our prevention side of the house with the plan review and inspections. So, uh, plan reviews, uh, we, we did, uh, three hundred and ten plan reviews, uh, construction inspection, uh, was two hundred and sixty. And then our annual inspections were seven hundred and fifty-two. Uh, we're hoping to get all of our annual inspections done, uh, ahead of schedule. And it looks like we're going to be able to do that in the city. And those are required inspections by the state. So we're going to be ahead of schedule on those. And that's my report for tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So I just want to make sure everybody understands the numbers you just gave us were just for February.
Just for February. Yes.
Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds.
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, we are up to public comments. And do we have public comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have several public comments.
Okay. A total of thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing or business items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments may be submitted and read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of this agenda. So could we have our first commenter, please?
Uh, yes, and these are public comments on non-agendized items. And we have two public comments on consent calendar items. Um, so the first comment is from Brian Love. As we all are aware, the city's homeless population is increasing. This population is expanding to more prominent and visual areas of our community. One area in particular are the benches at bus stops have become beds for the homeless. I see this more often than not along Winchester Road. I propose the city look into installing mid-rails on public benches, starting with the ones at bus stops, which will prevent someone from using them to lay down on. This will also make residents in the community feel safer when they are waiting at these stops for public transportation. Thank you for your time. The next comment is from Patrick Ellis. And it is in his capacity, um, representing president and CEO of Marietta Wiltmore Chamber of Commerce and president and CEO of Impact Southwest Riverside County. It may be more than three minutes, so I'll go ahead and start the clock. The last couple of months, I have been on an adventure regarding the new proposed MSHCP fees that were adopted by the RCA board back in December. When this was brought to my attention, I immediately reached out to local developers to discuss the impact that they would have for Southwest Riverside County. One project that was shared with me as an example was an outdoor shooting range in East Temecula. The owner of the project has two hundred and forty acres, forty of which would have to be given to RCA for conservation. They would develop ninety of the remaining acres. Fees, the project right now would be six hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and thirteen. Under the new fee structure, the cost would be one million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars, making the project impossible to complete. This is going to be devastating to some projects, especially projects that are considered recreational, which would fall into the industrial category as they do not have their own category. I reached out via email to each of the city council representatives on the RCA board from all Southwest Riverside County cities. I was able to talk to most of them with follow-up phone calls. I then attended the RCA board meeting virtually and spoke during public comment regarding this concern. After the RCA board meeting, I had a conversation with Lou Monville, acting executive director for BIA. BIA was invited by RCA to come and discuss with the board their concerns regarding the fees. I also had a conversation with Bill Blankenship, former executive director for BIA, and now a consultant that has worked on a few projects with NAIOP. He did inform me that in his conversations with NAIOP, they were not invited to the table by RCA to discuss the fees. I have been able to confirm that there was no one at the table representing commercial and industrial properties. I received an, an email from Ann Meyer and Aaron Hague with RCTC asking for a meeting with me to discuss the concerns I had raised at the RCA board meeting. I met with Ann, Erin and Natasha Johnson via Zoom to discuss. We talked about what I have laid out above. Some of the very interesting takeaways were that when RCA, RCTC talks about industrial projects, they only think about one million square foot projects like the Amazons. They were somewhat shocked to hear about the concerns expressed and desperate needs for industrial space in Southwest Riverside County. I expressed my concerns that the fee structure created a perception of picking winners and losers. I also brought up the shooting range project that I described earlier and once again was met with a bit of surprise regarding the recreational classification under industrial. Our conversation was very productive and was received with completely open ears and minds. My ask of the city council is to hold off on any actions regarding the MCM SHCP fee. There are obviously questions that need to be answered as to why representation from industrial commercial development was not at the table to discuss and the ultimate impact that this will have on future jobs in Southwest Riverside County. Thank you for your time to share this important dynamic for our region. The next speaker is PJ in Temecula. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council for an opportunity to speak to you tonight. Question, is a city council member who works for her half-baked political and religious ideology cultist brethren instead of the collective physical societal and economic health and well-being of her constituents, even a council member at all? Surely, as a physi- as a fiscally conservative Republican, Mrs. Alexander knows the value of ensuring the financial viability of a city when aid is offered from the state and federal level, right? Obviously, as a multi-level marketer, I mean, small business owner, she wouldn't dare refuse funds that can help city residents in order to appease GQP wackadoodles on Facebook, right? Oh, but she did, and she probably got so many likes on Facebook. That's super. Elections have consequences, they say. Being the lone no vote on emergency order funds that benefit the whole of the city you claim to represent is an example of the consequence of electing a right-wing anarchist to a local city council position because she waved the flag of a two-time loser con man on a street corner on the weekends. And because she's white, of course, perhaps she was only following in the footsteps of the great state Senator Melissa Melendez, who spends her entire time in Sacramento pulling the pigtails of Governor Gavin Newsom and pretending to actually work for her constituents. I think Mel has a crush on him. Don't tell him, okay? Role-playing as a false patriot time is over, just kept. Time to put on your adulting pants and actually do thoughtful work on behalf of your constituents instead of saying no to stuff that is good for the city because your conspiracy theory insurgency pastor will shout you out from the pulpit. It's over. He lost. You're not next. Grow up to your job. Also, more affordable housing within city limits. I know, I know you, Temecula NMBs, you don't like it and you don't know what it means, but it angers you and makes your head so hot and you just want to go on Temecula talk and use angry emojis. But we need more affordable housing. Suck it up, snowflakes. Also, nice to see Old Town Temecula back to being a COVID nineteen super-spreader hub with indoor dining and live country and western dancing. For a minute there, I thought we were losing our bad judgment swagger. The next speaker is Dale Borgeson. I, Dale Borgeson, and speaking on behalf of the Bike Valley, Bike Temecula Valley Coalition founding members, we recognize the importance of community outreach during the budget process, which is why I'm here before you this evening. As members of the city council tasked with creating a safe, sustainable, healthy, mobile and connected and prosperous community, we would like to encourage you to invest in projects that support bicycling and active transportation in our community. Trails, bike parks and bike lanes all support an active and healthy lifestyle. One's ability to safely enjoy our community by bike is an important component to a healthy body and mind as well as increasing opportunities for civic engagement. Moreover, seeing Temecula by bicycle exposes riders to many gems in our community that are less apparent when traveling by car. This includes local retailers and small businesses, parks and neighborhoods that make our city. Over the past year, we have seen an increased interest in biking during the COVID nineteen pandemic. People have once again fallen in love with the bicycle. Locally, the success of the Temecula pump track and newly added mini pump track only reinforces the idea that increased funding and bike-specific projects is a solid return on investment. It is important that we understand that the decisions we make today directly impact and influence the city we live in tomorrow. Please use your voice and encourage a dedicated annual funding source for bike-specific projects. We envision a community where everyone feels safe biking in Temecula, connecting our neighborhoods to schools, parks and businesses. We believe that continuing to improve the bike infrastructure across the city will connect more people with one another and improve the quality of life for all Temecula residents. And it's signed Dale Borgeson, Gordon Cooper, Rick Bender, Lyndon, Sean Sampson and George Tumail. The next speaker is Bob Cow. Item number seven is the fiber optic communication system upgrade project PW eighteen dash zero five. The project will install optic communication system upgrades. This project will upgrade the city's communication system equipment. This project sounds great, but the issues with this project are similar to those of red light cameras. Red light cameras were a leap into a surveillance state. The surveillance state is a government surveillance of large numbers of citizens and visitors. Such widespread surveillance is most usually justified as being necessary to prevent crime or terrorism. The growth of state surveillance has led to concerns about the erosion of privacy and civil liberties and also to worries that over-reliance on such measures may lead to complacency by law enforcement officers, Wikipedia. As an American, I love my freedom and my privacy. This project could deter the American dream. Those who don't wear a mask could be arrested in a future administration. Opposition party candidates could be surveilled at all times, thus corrupting a free and open society. The next speaker is Cecily Nelson. I'm here today in recognition of March as National Kidney Awareness Month and Thursday, March eleventh as World Kidney Day. I'm hoping to draw attention to chronic kidney disease, a disease currently affecting thirty-seven million American adults with millions more at increased risk. High-risk groups include those with diabetes, high blood pressure and family history of kidney failures. African-Americans, Latinos, Pacific Islanders, American Indians and seniors who are at particular increased risk. However, early detection can help prevent the progression of this disease to kidney failure. As a Temecula homeowner and resident of the region, as well as one who just started dialysis last month as a result of this disease, my hope is to encourage people to do two things. One, get to know your numbers and your personal risk. And two, consider living organ donation. There are a hundred thousand people, myself included, waiting for a kidney transplant. A recipient's best chance at improved and prolonged life. Please visit the National Kidney Foundation at kidney.org for more information. And if any fellow residents and colleagues would like to consider helping me directly, please take the compatibility assessment at health dot ucsd.edu. In any case, please stay aware, keep well and know that I and we as kidney warriors, thank you. The next speaker is Martha Howard. Although, and this is on item number six, although a functional recreation, recreational center is ideal, I strongly ask to reconsider allocating Measure S funds to aid small business and working residents who are struggling to put food on their table. Measure S passed under the premise to allocate its funds on safety. The greater safety than being able to have food and shelter. I think she meant to say there is no greater safety than being able to have food and shelter. And I did have one late email that just came in before I came downstairs. So, um, Ed Duel writes, I have been a longtime resident and businessman in Old Town Temecula since nineteen eighty-nine. I and others are very encouraged that the city is looking into having its own police station and in the future, having its own police force. The city spends a lot of money on public safety. I know our city residents would be so proud to have their own TPD. Two of my grown boys live, live in the city of Menifee and they are very impressed with Menifee's police department. With all my research, a city with over a hundred and fifteen thousand residents would benefit with its own police department. Thanks to Menifee and the city of Marietta, they have already created the wheel for us to follow. Let's get our Temecula Police Department back. Thank you. And Madam Mayor, that concludes public comments on non-agendized items and the two consent calendar items. Um, yes, yes, Madam Mayor, um, we have, uh, council member Alexander, um, council member Schwenk and then yourself.
You're on mute, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, you're muted.
As I was talking to Randy, Jessica, you get to go first.
All right, so we're at the city council, well, yeah, city council report, sorry, I couldn't hear much. All right, so as most of you know, we've had the, uh, Temecula Carers twenty-one day challenge, which has, uh, completed, uh, it's weak now and has been going really strong. We have had a hundred and thirty participants so far and it is still growing, which I love hearing. As you can see, we've got some families of all different ages, uh, participating. And so we have a try-it Tuesday, thrive Thursday with yoga, park visits, workouts, all stuff. I'll tell you, my best part so far has been the drawing. I'm not a sitting down person and for me to sit down and draw for an hour was incredible. It was like the most peaceful thing. So that was my challenge. So I just want to challenge each one of you to continue to sign up because we've had gift cards for the Cheesecake Factory, the Dairy Queen, uh, for the kids, beach balls, stuffed animals and a whole bunch of swag for them. And so I just want to urge everybody in Temecula to, again, uh, get healthy with mind and body. It's not about a weight thing, but it's really just about getting out and getting active and, uh, you know, just, um, doing something what we, things that we used to do. And so I just really urge you guys to get out, try something new and have some fun and maybe challenge a neighbor or a city council member. So, uh, anybody else been participating in it? I know Aaron Adams has been.
We could.
Watch his workout photos.
Yes, ma'am. I'm in for twenty-one days.
I've gotten my husband to walk to the mailbox with me, so.
I'm so proud.
Did you say you sat down for an hour?
Yeah, and colored.
I don't believe it.
I know, neither do I, but I did. It was a chance why they call it the twenty-one day challenge. That was a challenge. Sit down and color.
Well, I do believe that. Zach, what are you, how are you going to follow that, Zach?
Well, I'm just going to follow it. So, um, I don't know how, but I'm going to just do it. Um, so I had the, uh, privilege of attending, um, the, the ribbon cutting for, uh, a new mural project we have here in the city. And this is the student mural project. And this is really, uh, as you can see on the slide, this is inspired by a Great Oaks student who had emailed Felicia Joseph and, uh, and just reached out and, and was like, hey, we have this idea. Uh, what do you think? And, uh, you know, and after working through, uh, with Director Hawkins and and Bigfoot Graphics and the staff at the museum and Public Works, we came up with a, a really, really, really great, uh, opportunity for these students. So this is, uh, this is the slide here, uh, the mural. And, um, what we're going to do is it's going to be a rotating, uh, exhibit essentially. And this is on the outside. So you can imagine if you're at Sam Hicks Park, uh, you're at the museum, this is on the outside of, uh, the restrooms. Um, that doesn't sound very great, but it's actually like a really great space, uh, for a mural.
I was calling it the auxiliary building.
Auxiliary, okay. I'll, I'll go with that in the future.
Yeah.
But, but, but what, what's really great about this is this was a blank space. And, uh, between Public Works and the museum staff and, and Kevin's staff and TCSD, we created this frame. We added lighting, um, and really just, um, sort of in, in, just engage this space. And it's really great with the new park that we have. Uh, and the museum itself, um, this just adds to it. Uh, and what this does is, and, and we talked about it that day and Director Hawkins was one of the, one of the folks that was championing this was the idea that there's ownership of this park now, right? And this is really important. This is a really important park for our city. Um, and to have folks that are willing to display their art, um, in this, in this park and for us to be able to pull this off is just, uh, is, is just really a testament to who we are as a city and, and, uh, and, and listening to the students that day and just the fact that they were just, they were just happy to be heard. Um, that was really something that, that I took away that day and, uh, the teachers and the advisors and the principals and everyone that was there was just so proud of who we are as a city to, uh, to listen to these kids and, uh, and, and allow them to, um, to display their art here. So, you know, we, we like to see this, uh, program grow, uh, we'll, we'll theme it, uh, along with the second Saturdays, I'm, I'm sure at the, at the museum. And it really just be an opportunity to, uh, learn a bit, a little bit more about our community. So I'm really proud of what, what, um, came out of this and, and really look forward to, um, what the future holds for it.
I love that. And just to clarify, they did not paint on the building.
No, this is, uh, this is a frame. So Public Works built a frame and this is a, is a painted mural on, uh, paper, actually. Um, that's just on the building.
No, that's, they can roll it up and keep it.
Yeah, well, that's the hope, right? Like you can take it back to the school and then as the next one. Like you can take it back to the school, and then as the next one comes in, they'll, they'll display that and the same, so.
I'm actually working on this story on the school district side, so we're filing it as a press release tomorrow. Wonderful story, and I think we're gonna have a lot more of these wonderful stories to come, so thank you, Zach. So I have a little something. And I believe here it comes. Do we have a slide for that one? No slide for the, for the Margarita Creek Park?
We have a short video.
There you go.
It's queued up for the latest playground retrofit and addition.
This was fun, too.
Hi, I'm Temecula Mayor Mary Ann Edwards, and I'm here at Winchester Creek Park, and boy, are you in for a treat. It's a theme, of course, is the creek, so we've got giant frogs, and we've got a cave, and we've got water, kinda, kinda. So everybody's having a great time, and everybody come out and play at Winchester Creek Park.
Good morning, Temecula. Zach Schwank, Councilmember and current TCSD President, here with you today at Winchester Creek Park. Ribsey and I just walked over to this wonderful new addition to our park community. We were really excited in a couple of weeks to be able to open this park. This is a creek theme, so come on over, hop on the lily pads, play with the frogs, and just enjoy yourself. This park also has restrooms, has a sand volleyball court, and it has three basketball hoops. Plenty of shade, really a great spot for you to come over and spend some time with your family. I want to take this time also to thank city staff for their hard work during this unprecedented times to open four parks this year. It is really exciting, the hard work and dedication that everyone has put into these parks to make these open for us. It's really exciting, and I'm really proud of the team. So get out here and enjoy everything Temecula has to offer.
So I am James Stewart, everybody calls me Stu. I'm your city councilman from the city of Temecula. Welcome to yet another fabulous theme park that we have done here in Temecula. This one is the Winchester Creek Park that's right on the Margarita, just across the street from Harveston. And it has a creek theme, hence Winchester Creek. So if you look at it, you'll see like a blue thing that flows through it, where there's a canoe in the water, there's some logs in the water. So another fun park for the kids here in Temecula. This is our most northern park. And again, just to benefit all the kids and families who live here in North Temecula. So get your kids outside, get them playing on these parks. This will be open very shortly. So please enjoy them, because that's why we built them, for you.
Well, I'll be bringing my dog next time. Not to be outdone by Zach. Actually, we should all bring our dogs, and it's not a dog park, though. Okay, so we have City Council reports, so now Mr. Gario. Now we're ready to go to the annual joint meeting, City Council and the Planning Commission. So Luke, you want, you want to give us an introduction here?
Madam Mayor, I was gonna go ahead and turn it over to the Chairman Ron Gario, who has a presentation for the City Council tonight.
All right.
After that, I'm speechless. Okay, it's my turn. So everything I said before is true, is a segue to everything that you just talked about. Great planning makes a beautiful, great community, so here we go. So first of all, we have the next slide or a slide, please, somebody, IT. You have a slide? Okay, no slide, all right. Last year's planning commissioners. Next slide.
That looks good.
That's, yeah, it's a beautiful picture. There we go. So last year's planning commission members were chairperson now, Renee Charlie Trejo. And I gotta say that Renee did a fantastic job under some very trying conditions, going to virtual meetings. Very confusing, I'm sure everybody that's done it knows it, but she pulled it off, she did a great job. Myself, we have this year's vice chair, John Tlesio, Commissioner Gary Watson, Commissioner Gary Yeomans. Next slide, please. Now we're into our long-range planning. We reviewed and commented on the sixth cycle of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, OR RENA, and the twenty one twenty nine housing element update, which I think Director Watson is gonna be talking about later on. And we also did an amendment to Title seventeen of Temecula Municipal Code Regulations for accessory dwelling units versus how many, the size, et cetera, that you can have on your property. Next slide, please. We did a general plan consistency review for an amendment to the fiscal year twenty 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 four Capital Improvement Program to add the preparation of an urban forest management plan and inventory. You can read all about that online, I think. And an ordinance revising the Temecula Municipal Code to conform with Density Bonus Law under the California Government Code. Just all those great codes and regulations that we have to work with. Next slide, please. And this is the one that everybody's scratching their head over. Went to a convention a couple of years ago with the American Planning Association and sat in a an hour-long presentation on this, and even the presenter couldn't really explain it to us. So if any of you know what it means, I'm still scratching my head, but anyhow, this was Senate Bill seven forty three that was signed back in two thousand thirteen. Supposed to add more housing, more vehicles, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So as soon as we figure out how to do that, I guess this VMT might come into work. I know that the Automobile Club is looking into this as well. Next slide. And the general plan consistent review fiscal year twenty one twenty five Capital Improvement Program. So in other words, it just lists all of the things that the city wants to accomplish by need during the next five years. Next slide. And we get an amendment to the Old Town Specific Plan to allow four-story hotels within the downtown core district and to clarify the use of a minor exception for building heights, pretty much allows the director of planning to make certain discretionary moves, parking, landscape, building height, et cetera. And I think that does it for me, so we'll turn it over now to Commissioner Early Trejo.
Ebony.
Hello.
Hello.
I don't know, can you see me?
I can see you, and I can see your slides.
Okay, I can see the slides, so that's the best part. All right, so we approved a Solana assisted living, which is right on the southeast corner of Solana and Inez, Inez Margarita.
Margarita.
Margarita, sorry. So it's kind of cool to have something on that property that's been empty for so long. So we're excited about having that and especially having another place for our seniors in the city. So that's gonna be a great look right there. Next slide, please. And Summers Band. When I was on Citizen Scholarship Foundation, we gave scholarships to seniors from Rory Paw. And at that time, it was like, when is that ever gonna be built, right? When is that ever gonna happen? And so it's pretty cool to actually be around, right? And see this happening, so we've been able to approve. Here you can see eighty six units in Planning Area fourteen of Summers Band, and we'll go to the next slide. And sixty four units in Planning Area sixteen A. Next slide. And forty five units in Planning Area sixteen B of Summers Band. Next slide. Fifty one units in Planning Area thirty one B of Summers Band, so it's happening. And next slide, please. That's it, that's my part.
I was on Citizen Scholarship with you, so it's gonna be, what, fifteen years? Ten years?
Oh, yeah, probably fifteen years, something like that. So it's kind of crazy, but that is really exciting to have that happening there and to be a part of it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next slide.
Hi, neighbor.
Hi, neighbor. Almost only been two years. You cut off on the side, anyway. Development plan for the Summers Band aged qualified recreation center within Planning Area twenty three B. I'm a little taken again that they put me in the part that talks about the senior housing element. But they do it all the time, it's all right. It's gonna be a beautiful little section there for the housing in that area. We, we worked considerably with the developer and the neighbor to make things as good as we could get it.
Looks great.
The building itself is equally attractive, I can get it to go up. Next slide. It's overlapping, no, what, go back one. Senior Center, first seat. Can you go back one? There it is, I'll go forward. Next slide. Anyway, that's how we're gonna get to see it, but that's a beautiful building. And it'll be well-received when the building starts. The, the best thing about this is, will lead into it here, is the, in my mind, is the mix of, of housing. It, it's something we do here well, if we can get away with it from the state. We do our own thing as much as we can to make it presentable and lasting for our citizens. I keep getting half a slide.
Oh, we can see it at the bottom.
Okay, it's the bottom half that makes it a single unit. And next slide. And this is home part of review of eighty one units from Planning Area twenty two of Summers Band. These are all part of the same major project that went on there, and just, and you can see the locations as they, as they switch back and forth. Here's a slide that's important to me and others that I've heard from. Notice the, the single unit in this area. And we've been able to persuade, I don't think that's the word, maybe assist the developer in planning more and more of these single units as we go along with building the housing elements for the city. There's a demand for them, it's difficult to, to make, make your bones and make your money from them. And a lot of them are going by the wayside because of some things the state does. But what we have left to work with, we do what we can. We try to encourage unique buildings that, that serve people's benefits and needs. And I think we're, we're doing as well as we can, and that's only with the able help of the city staff, which again, is the best we've gotten in the area, as far as I'm concerned. And the best I've worked with in my twenty-plus years. Next slide. Home product review for seventy units in Planning Area twenty four of Summers Band. Now, again, these are typical of some of the housing that we approved, and it's the kind of thing that you would want if you didn't like stairs, which I don't. And it's gonna be a real, real boon to the housing element and the, the diversity of housing that we need in the city. Next, next slide.
Commissioner Yeomans is up.
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Commissioner Tlesio.
Good to see everybody. My session is gonna be about industrial growth on the west side. And which we all know is a former banker for myself. Industrial buildings bring jobs and get our citizens off the road, going to San Diego and Orange County. So, so what we've got here is we've got four different buildings up on Avenue to Alvarado. And again, as my, from my experience, my banking world, these are the size buildings that are small business needs. Oops, did I lose something here? Well, I'm still here, but I don't see the pictures. But the pictures are pretty simple. There's four industrial buildings we reapproved up on Avenue to Alvarado. The first one is fifteen thousand six hundred square feet. Second slide is fourteen thousand five hundred square feet. Third one is fifteen thousand eight hundred, and the last one's eleven thousand eight hundred. And as I said, these are perfect-sized buildings for our business community. And like I said, if we're lucky, they create jobs. There you go. That's building number seven, that's the last one, so.
Nice.
So they're nice projects, and it's a big, it's good to see some revitalization on the west side.
And you can tell from this slide, too, we do have, we do have room to grow. You know, Temecula is almost built out, but these are some of the areas where we have real potential, especially on the industrial side.
Yeah, that area's been pretty stagnant for a while, so it's exciting to see these four buildings come up.
Yeah, it looks great. So is that it, planners?
That's it for me, but I think this.
You know what?
I'll be right there, I can't get the picture to come up with me, but I'm here, actually, so.
Well, you sound good. You sound good.
Oh, well, thank you, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Continuing our, our presentation here, we approved a modification to the Temecula Hyundai site along our auto row, which continues to grow. And I see that they've already started construction on the new Lexus dealership as well. So, boy, things are going great in that, in that sector of our economy, and we're happy to, to facilitate expansion and growth there. So, next slide, please. We also reviewed and approved Harveston Congregate Care, a development plan for twenty seven thousand five hundred square foot three-story congreg care facility with retail and restaurant uses. And for those of you that may not be familiar with that, probably not many, that's right next to the lake there at Harveston. And it's had some use in it before, but this is going to be completely different. So that, that's, that's going to be another continued addition to the city as far as care for people that we haven't had as much ability to accommodate before. So these are great trends, I think. Next slide, please. We also reviewed and approved the Los Azendos, a development plan for seventy seven unit affordable multifamily housing community within the uptown specific plan, just down the street from the Airstream Trailer Facility. For those of you that may not know, this is, you know, a housing development right in the middle of a pretty industrial area. So it's going to be, I think, a really good start to our new uptown specific plan when it comes to housing. And it also portends, you know, the direction that the state's taking us with, with our ability to deal with affordable multifamily housing, and that's going to be very active in the next, the next few years, I'm sure. So we will continue to, to do our best to uphold our legal commitment to the, the RENA numbers. And it is a challenge, as you all know very well, that the, the balance between, you know, a city like Temecula and letting it get out of control and, and, and maybe not live up to the standards that we've come, become accustomed to is something that we're going to have to really monitor and make sure that we can accommodate, accommodate the legal requirements and also maintain that feeling of Temecula that we've had ever since we've been incorporated. Next slide, please. Also, a specific, specific plan amendment to add a residential overlay zone to Planning Area twelve for up to one thousand units. And that, that also includes some apartments that will be sighted pretty close to the freeway. And so once again, we're, we're dealing with a project that's going to have a variety of housing types, which continues to try to address the needs of all of our residents and the people that would like to be here. Next slide, please. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Gary. Does anyone have any questions for Chairman Gario?
In addition, Madam Mayor.
Sir.
The commission approves smaller projects, too. We do conditional use permits for telecommunications centers, for alcohol licenses for various businesses in town. We have ongoing legal training from our staff. And during normal times, which was something very unique, we started years ago, but we'll do a public. but we'll do a public notice meeting, which invites the public. And we'll take staff, planning commission, and now the traffic public safety commissioner has come with us. And we tour, uh, some of the buildings that have been previously approved in various stages of construction, uh, some are completed, and see what we could have done to maybe tweak them and make them a little bit better for the community. No one, not always find, don't always find something wrong, but on occasion, we do. And, uh, it just, it helps us, uh, down, down the road. So, again, we may not be the fun commission, but we're getting a lot of stuff done. We keep pretty busy, uh, Director Watson keeps us busy, and that's a, it's a great group, and, uh, we love doing it for the city.
Well, you're doing a great job, um, and very busy.
And one thing they forgot to mention about Summers Ben, and I'm surprised nobody brought it up, uh, we have a third sports park coming to Temecula because of that project. It's a long time coming, and they're developing the creek. Something we were told you could never do, something that's been done since the sixties and seventies, but we're doing it here. And of course, you can't use it if it's raining and flooded, but when it's not, it's okay to use it, it's, it's a good deal.
Yeah, my kids actually played, uh, at a park like that, played, uh, Little League in Orange County. So, um, we didn't play when it was rainy, but as soon as the water receded, there was, the grass was still there, so I don't know how that works, but it does.
Well, it's gonna work here. So, thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. Okay, so, we can move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, wave reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes of February twenty-three, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, number three, approve listed demands. Number four, accept the donation of vehicles for the police volunteer program. Number five, approve the extension of joint use agreement with the Temecula Valley Unified School District for Temecula Elementary School. And I will be abstaining on this, um, item because of my employment with the district. Um, number six, approve design build agreement and general conditions with De La Secura Builders, Inc. for the Margarita Recreation Center Project PW seventeen dash twenty-one. So.
Madam Mayor.
Sir.
Uh, just to emphasize that, as you mentioned, you will be abstaining on item five due to your employment and your duties with the, uh, school district. Um, we will note your abstention and the reasons for it in the minutes. Uh, you do not need to leave the dais, or shouldn't say leave the dais, leave the, the Zoom meeting or, or sign off, um, unless a council member pulls it from the consent calendar.
Thank you.
And you're, be able to vote yes or no on the whole consent calendar, because it just notes your abstention.
Okay, thanks. I am actually the dais, so Randy and I are the only ones in the whole room, it's very lonely up here. Number seven, approve the plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for the fiber optic communication system upgrade project PW eighteen dash zero five. Number eight, approve the First Amendment to the Minor Maintenance Agreement with Renee B. Martinez, Senior DBA Renee's Commercial Management for Homeless Encampment Cleanup Services. Number nine, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for Pachanga Parkway Environmental Mitigation Project PW eleven dash zero one. And number ten, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for the citywide Slurry Seal Program Fiscal Year two thousand nineteen dash twenty, PW nineteen dash twelve. So I will take a motion and a second for consent calendar, if nobody wants to pull anything.
Move, approve.
Motion for me on number five.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion in a second, so Randy, would you call the roll?
Yes, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get, the motion was by.
Me.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Um, and the second was Councilmember Ron. And with that, Councilmember Alexander.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Councilmember Ron. Councilmember Stewart.
Aye.
And Councilmember Schrank.
Yes.
Alright. So we are going to recess the city council meeting to the scheduled meetings of the Temecula Community Services District, Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the Temecula Housing Authority, and/or the Temecula Public Financing Authority. And so, that, take it away.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, I'll call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Uh, Madam City Clerk, since we're in the virtual setting, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Director Alexander.
Here.
Director Edwards.
Here.
Director Ron. Director Ron, I see you are here. Uh, Director Stewart.
Here.
And President Schrank.
I'm here, thank you very much. Um, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
Okay, thanks, I'll go ahead and dispense with the reading of those rules, and we will move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Uh, one item tonight, I'm, item eleven is approve action minutes of February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion, any second. Alright, motion from Mayor Edwards, second from, uh, Stewart. Would you please take the roll call vote?
Yes, Director Alexander.
Aye.
Director Edwards.
Aye.
Director Ron.
Aye.
Director Stewart.
Yes.
President Schrank.
Yes. Alright, thanks so much, that passes five-zero. Do we have a director's report this evening, Director Hawkins?
I don't think there's anything for me to add after Chair Levine and the council, so nothing further, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, sir. Do we have a general manager's report this evening?
Nothing further than that, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir, any director's reports this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting to our next, uh, regularly held meeting on Tuesday, March twenty-third, we're adjourned.
Thank you, so I am going to call to order the joint meeting between the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency and City Council. So could we have the roll call, please, I believe we're all still here.
Yeah.
Randy, you're muted.
Here.
She can read your lips, Randy.
Um, Director Alexander, I noted you are here, uh, Chair Edwards.
Here.
Director Ron. Director Schrank.
Here.
And Director Stewart.
Here.
Okay, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Alright, so moving on to item number twelve, approve the Eighth Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement for the Town Square Marketplace Development between the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the City of Temecula, and Town Square Marketplace Old Town LLC, APN numbers nine-two-two-three-six-zero-zero-zero-four, zero-zero-five, zero-zero-six, and zero-zero-seven. Okay, so. I will accept a motion.
I'll move consent.
Thank you.
Motion in a second, and could we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Director Alexander.
Aye.
Director Edwards.
Aye.
Director Ron.
Aye.
Director Stewart.
Aye, aye.
And Director Schrank.
Yes.
Did we have something strange for dinner, Stu, did you, you know?
I'm just very relaxed up at the cabin.
You're being a little contagious this evening, I think. Uh-huh. So, anything, sorry, Executive Director.
Nothing further.
Anything, board members?
No.
Nope, in that case, I will adjourn, start a meeting until the next meeting held on March twenty-third at five-thirty. Thank you. So now, we're going to move on to the, what I like to call the TAPPA, TAPFA, which is the Temecula Public Financing Authority. And this meeting's been called to order, could we have the roll call for the record, please?
Yes, Director Alexander.
Here.
Chair Edwards.
Here.
Director Ron.
Here.
Director Schrank.
Here.
And Director Stewart.
Alright, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
We do not, moving on to item thirteen, approve action minutes of February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. And that is the consent calendar, that's all. So I'll take a motion.
Move consent.
Second.
Motion in a second? Oh, I almost called for the vote. Go for it, Randy, for the record.
Director Alexander.
Aye.
Chair Edwards.
Aye.
Director Ron.
Aye.
Director Stewart.
Aye.
And Director Schrank.
Yes.
Okay, anything, Executive Director or Board members?
Nothing tonight, Madam Chair.
Not, then we will adjourn the meeting of the TAPFA, which is the Temecula Public Financing Authority. And we're going to reconvene the Temecula City Council, and move on to business item fourteen. Receive presentation on the history, current efforts, and future opportunities and requirements regarding affordable housing within the city of Temecula. So I know that we're going to have public comments on this one, correct?
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor Edwards, we have eighteen public comments on this. Um, some of the comments are repetitive, and some of them have actually, um, the, the content may be covered in the presentation um, that, um, Director Watson will be given, as well as we've received similar comments over the last few weeks. So we're gonna go ahead and read those public comments into the record right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and, um, with these particular public comments, um, they, they are, we do have five minutes, as it is a business item. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and set the clock for five minutes, in case there's any that are longer. Okay, the first comment is Karen Raymond. Um, according to the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-nine, housing element Temecula is required to produce four thousand one hundred eighty-three housing units. It, however, does not answer how or what specific types of housing this will include. Yet the council approved an entire community heirloom farms off of Inez and Date Street with no provisions for attainable homeownership for the local workforce, nor any affordable housing. The housing element also states that the previous housing element for two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty determined four, one thousand four hundred ninety-three units were needed, was this accomplished? With the current housing element, the median Temecula home is five hundred thousand and requires an income of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in order to qualify. Sixty percent of Temecula's population does not earn enough to qualify for home ownership within their own community. The average rent for an apartment is, in Temecula, is two thousand eleven dollars, again, according to the current housing element. How is the city addressing the need for starter homes for the local economic workforce? Rentals create zero upward mobility, and with rent being so out of touch with income levels, it inhibits the ability to save for better. How does the council plan to address the need for homeownership for the local economic workforce? What is the council's resistance to discussing the merits of a proposal brought by a local workforce community member? Please consider Lamont's proposal. The next speaker is Alicia Kelly. My name is Alicia, and I am a single mother of two young children, working and living in Temecula. I currently rent a bedroom in a house, because that is all I can afford in this area. I work hard, I work full-time, and doing all that I can to make sure my kids are living the best life possible. It is not easy living in a bedroom with three people, they deserve better, I deserve better. In regards to the affordable housing listed on the agenda to be read into the record, according to the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-nine, housing element Temecula is required to produce four thousand one hundred eighty-three housing units. It, however, does not answer how or what specific types of housing this will include. Yet the council approved an entire community heirloom farms off of Inez and Date Street with no provisions for attainable homeownership for the local workforce, nor any affordable housing. The housing element also states that the previous housing element for two thousand thirteen to twenty determined one thousand four hundred and ninety-three units were needed, was this accomplished? With the current housing element, the median Temecula home is five hundred thousand and requires an income of a hundred and twenty-five thousand in order to qualify. Sixty percent of Temecula's population does not earn enough to qualify for homeownership within their community. The average rent for an apartment is two thousand eleven dollars, again, according to the current housing element. How is the city addressing the need for starter homes for the local economic workforce? Rentals create zero upward mobility, and with rent being so out of touch with income levels, it inhibits the ability to save for better. How does the council plan to address the need for homeownership for the local economic workforce? What is the council's resistance to discussing the merits of a proposal brought by a local workforce community member? Please consider Lamont's proposal. The next, um, speaker is Wayne Mooker. Does Temecula's general plan have enough zoned land for affordable housing within the regional housing needs allocation Rena to attain the goal of two thousand one hundred and fifty-four units by twenty-twenty-nine for low-income households? How much public funds have been utilized over the past ten years for purpose of any type of development within the city of Temecula? If public funds were used, how much was allocated to low-income housing? Does the city have any regulations on annual rent increases for low-income housing? I look forward to the council's response. The next speaker is Moira Johnson. In regards to the affordable housing listed on the agenda to be read into the record, according to the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-nine, housing element Temecula is required to produce four thousand one hundred eighty-three housing units. It, however, does not answer how or what specific types of housing this will include. Yet the council approved an entire community heirloom farms off of Inez and Date Street with no provisions for attainable homeownership for the local workforce, nor any affordable housing. The housing element also states that the previous housing element for two thousand thirteen to twenty determined one thousand four hundred ninety-three units were needed, was this accomplished? With the current housing element, the median Temecula home is five hundred thousand and requires an income of a hundred and twenty-five thousand in order to qualify. Sixty percent of Temecula's population does not earn enough to qualify for homeownership within their own community. The average rent for an apartment in Temecula is two thousand and eleven dollars, again, according to the current housing element. How is the city addressing the need for starter homes for the local economic workforce? Rentals create zero upward mobility, and with rent being so out of touch with income levels, it inhibits the ability to save for better. How does the council plan to address the need for homeownership for the local economic workforce? What is the council's resistance to just discussing the merits of a proposal brought by a local workforce community member? Please consider Lamont's proposal. The next speaker is Greece. In regards to agenda item number fourteen, receive presentation on the history, current efforts, and future opportunities and requirements regarding affordable housing within the city of Temecula, a few points need to be made and considered. It seems that year after year, the topic of affordable low-income housing is regularly injected into our city by outside forces, be they state capital politicians, out-of-touch Washington DC bureaucrats, globalists seeking to fulfill some sort of United Nations plan, and/or a myriad of other social engineers, social utopians, and activist pressure groups. Yet the decision for such plans ultimately rests here with the people of Temecula who exercise their free agency and self-determination through their elected representatives at the local level. I am generally supportive of affordable housing, but of course, the devil is in the details. The development of more affordable single-family homes after building the needed roads and infrastructure is a worthy goal. Unfortunately, the costs of such single-family homes have become prohibitive largely due to state and local dictates, numerous and high fees, complicated red tape, and a plethora of bureaucracy. A return back to free-market principles and the curtailing of the cost distortions created by government interference would go a long way to making single-family homes more affordable. Another issue related to affordable and low-income housing are the problems associated with high-density housing. Right now, many of America's largest cities are experiencing an exodus of people due to the close proximities that are shared by living in urban environments. Much of this is a direct result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, as social distancing has become a new reality in life. Yet the practice of social distancing becomes antithetical to the idea of enticing more and more people into high-density housing. This is the new reality, as the public at large is now becoming more averse to crowded and close-quarter living conditions. High numbers of people living in closer proximities to each other will spread germs at higher rates, this is common sense. Another problem associated with high-density housing is one of environmental impact. Crowding more people together in high-density living conditions naturally results in higher carbon outputs, more pollution, and higher concentrations of greenhouse gases. Simply put, if you seek to minimize our city's carbon footprint, then you must curtail the development of high-density housing. Of course, this seems so obvious and commonsensical that I should not have to bore you with further details, but I will leave you with this last bit of food for thought. Several decades ago, ethiologist John C. Calhoun conducted a rather famous experiment in which he overcrowded Norwegian rats into high-density living conditions, then observed and noted the high prevalence of resulting social pathologies and degenerative behaviors that followed. Calhoun described this as the behavioral sink, and I believe that even in this day and age, this experiment serves as a noteworthy parable to what is occurring within many of our highly populated metropolitan areas right now. This was further written about by American author Tom Wolfe in his essay, Oh, Rock Bottom, Sliding Down Into The Behavioral Sink, in his social critique novel, The Pump House Gang. In the meantime, I appeal to you city council members to resist the sirensong by out-of-touch dogmatic bureaucrats, governmental associations, and social engineers who would seek to create urbanized ghettos within our cherished cities, accompanied by all of the social and criminal pathologies that would naturally follow in the wake. This is a simple illustration of cause and effect. If you cause more overcrowding with high-density housing, then the effect will be more crime, more destitution, and more misery. You can take that to the bank, thank you for your time and consideration. The next speaker is Dario Bianchi. It seems that year after year, the topic of affordable low-income housing is regularly injected to, into our city by outside forces, be they cap, state capital politicians, out-of-touch Washington DC bureaucrats, globalists seeking to fulfill some sort of United Nations plan, and/or a myriad of other social engineers, social utopians, and activist pressure groups. Yet the decision for such plans ultimately rests here with the people of Temecula who exercise their free agency and self-determination through their elected representatives at the local level. I am generally supportive of affordable housing, but of course, the devil is in the details. The development of more affordable, single-family homes. single-family homes after building the needed roads and infrastructure is a worthy goal. Unfortunately, the cost of such single-family homes have become prohibitive largely due to state and local dictates, numerous and high fees, complicated red tape and a plethora of bureaucracy. A return back to free market principles and the curtailing of the cost distortions created by government interference would go a long way to make single-family homes more affordable. Another issue related to affordable and low-income housing are the problems associated with high-density housing. Right now, many of America's large cities are experiencing an exodus of people due to the close proximities that are shared by living in urban environments. Much of this is a direct result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. The social distancing has become a new reality in life. Yet the practice of social distancing becomes antithetical to the idea of enticing more and more people into high-density housing. This is the new reality as the public at large is now becoming more averse to crowded and close-quarter living conditions. Higher numbers of people living in closer proximity to each other will spread germs at higher rates. This is common sense. Another problem associated with high-density housing is one of environmental impact. Crowding more people together in higher-density living conditions naturally results in higher carbon outputs, more pollution and higher concentrations of greenhouse gases. Simply put, if you seek to minimize our city's carbon footprint, then you must curtail the development of high-density housing. Of course, this seems so obvious and common sense that I should not have to bore you with further details, but I will leave you with this last last bit of food for thought. Several decades ago, ethologist John C. Calhoun conducted a rather famous experiment in which he overcrowded uh Norwegian rats into high-density living conditions, then observed and noted the high prevalence of resulting social pathologies and degenerative behaviors that followed. Calvin described this as the behavioral sink, and I believe that even in his age and age, this experiment serves as a noteworthy parable to what is occurring within many of our highly populated metropolitan areas right now. This was further written about by American author Tom Wolfe in his essay, Oh, Rotten Gotham, Sliding Down Into The Behavioral Sink in his social critique novel, The Pump House Gang. In the meantime, I appeal to you city council members to resist the siren song by out-of-touch dogmatic bureaucrats, governmental associations and social engineers who would seek to create urbanized ghettos within our cherished city accompanied by all the social and criminal pathologies that would naturally follow in the wake. This is a simple illustration of cause and effect. If you cause more overcrowding with high-density housing, then the effect will be more crime, more destitution and more misery. You can take that to the bank. Thank you for your time. The next speakers are Brian and Christine O'Neil. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, we have a new awareness of the effects of high-density housing. High-density housing has proven to be hazardous to our health and also problematic for the environment as this configuration results in higher carbon emissions and greenhouse gases. Temecula is a modern city which embraces the current science on climate change, carbon emissions and greenhouse gases. In fact, Temecula currently offers numerous affordable housing units available, has numerous affordable affordable housing units available. Please take a pause on additional high-density housing in our city. The next speaker is Johnny Estes. In a recent advocacy meeting, a prominent and politically engaged community member stated they had never heard of this need for attainable housing. This reflects a multitude of factors, including council silence on the housing crisis. However, beyond that, it is important to recognize that individuals who would most benefit from attainable housing are at work. They do not have the luxury to carve out time to attend council meetings or review housing elements proposals. Moreover, they often do not know where to begin when it comes to local government or civic involvement. The next speaker is Laurel Lamont. According to data obtained from official city sources, the median price for a home in Temecula is five hundred thousand and requires an annual income of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to qualify. Based on this information, sixty percent of Temecula households are locked out of homeownership in their own community. Moreover, the average rent for an apartment in Temecula is two thousand and eleven dollars. So-called affordable housing is finally on the agenda for discussion. Out of respect for the overwhelming majority of your constituency, please answer the following questions. Why did council approve heirloom farms off of Inez and Date Street with no provisions for attainable homeownership for the local workforce or any affordable housing? With sixty percent of Temecula's households locked out of homeownership, why didn't council negotiate better terms for the affordable housing developments currently in the pipeline? In other words, why does the city give developer millions of dollars in grants and property but fails to negotiate basic living standards such as washer and dryer hookups or dishwashers? I brought my proposal for attainable homeownership to council member Shwank's attention in April twenty twenty. Nearly a year later, a year later, with sixty percent of Temecula's households unable to purchase a home, why has council refused to discuss the merits of this proposal? What action steps will council take beyond the presentation of an informative video to address the need for starter homes for the local economic workforce? I'm a member of Temecula's local workforce. I am also a single mom. I've raised my son all on my own and work hard to keep us off of government assistance. I've spent an exorbitant amount of time and late nights researching housing policies and the role of local government. I do this out of a heartfelt passion for other humans and not because I find it, I find any of it particularly interesting or fun. Please do not make a mockery of my time by ignoring the valid questions I brought before you tonight. On a final note, I come to this table wanting to be allies. My intentions are strictly advocating for the local workforce. Therefore, I direct this part to council member Ron. I sincerely believe you care. I listen to you speak about rent freezes during the early months of the pandemic. I've watched you take the lead when necessary and not conform to a majority. I respect the manner in which you represent your constituents and believe you are the bridge between council and the local economic workforce. Let us come to the table and work with you to create attainable homeownership. The next speaker is Lacy Lewis. I'm writing to you to express the need for attainable homeownership in the city of Temecula. I have worked for Trader Joe's for fourteen years. It is impossible to find suitable housing that I am able to afford for myself and two daughters. I make too much money for low-income housing and not nearly enough to even rent a decent apartment. It is unfortunate that we are important enough to serve the community, yet we are not important enough to be able to afford to live within the community we serve. We need to be seen. Every time you go to the grocery store and someone checks your groceries out at the register, that is us. The bus drivers that pick up your kids, take them to school and get them home safely, that is us. According to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine, housing element Temecula is required to produce four thousand one hundred eighty-three housing units. It however does not answer how or what types of of what types of housing this will include. Yet the council approved an entire community heirloom farms off of Inez and Date Street with no provisions for attainable homeownership for the local workforce nor any affordable housing. This housing element also states that the previous housing element for two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty determined one thousand four hundred ninety-three units were needed. Was this accomplished? With the current housing element, the median Temecula home is five hundred thousand and requires an income of a hundred and twenty-five thousand in order to qualify. Sixty percent of Temecula's population does not earn enough to qualify for homeownership within their own community. The average rent for an apartment in Temecula is two thousand eleven dollars again, according to the current housing element. How is the city addressing the need for starter homes for the local economic workforce? Rentals create zero upward mobility and with rent being so out of touch with income levels, it inhibits the ability to save for better. How does the council plan to address the need for homeownership for the local economic workforce? What is the council's resistance to discussing the merits of a proposal bought by a local brought by a local workforce community member? Please consider Lamont's proposal. The next speaker is Suzie Lynn. Hello, my name, I'm sorry, it's actually Susan Pierce. Hello, my name is Susan Pierce and I am a single mother in Temecula. I work full-time at Trader Joe's and my son goes to school here and is in the third grade. I currently live with a roommate who is moving out in July. At the at that time, I will find myself without a home unless I can find an affordable option. I'm looking and will continue to look at all affordable rental options in Temecula. It is turning out to be a lot more discouraging than I had anticipated. I would like for you to know I'm here and very much in need for you to advocate for me. According to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine, housing element Temecula is required to produce four thousand one hundred eighty-three housing units. It however does not answer how or what specific types of housing this will include. Yet the council approved an entire community heirloom farms off of Inez and Date Street with no provisions for attainable homeownership for the local workforce nor any affordable housing. This housing element also states that the previous housing element for two thousand thirteen, twenty twenty determined one thousand four hundred ninety-three units were needed. Was this accomplished? With the current housing element, the median Temecula home is five hundred thousand dollars and requires an income of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in order to qualify. Sixty percent of Temecula's population does not earn enough to qualify for homeownership within their own community. The average rent for an apartment in Temecula is two thousand and eleven dollars again, according to the current housing element. How is the city addressing the need for starter homes for the local economic workforce? Rental creates zero upward mobility and with rent being so out of touch with income levels, it inhibits the ability to save for better. How does the council plan to address the need for homeownership for the local economic workforce? What is the council's resistance to discussing the merits of a proposal brought by a local workforce community member? Please consider Lamont's proposal. The next speaker is Bob Cowell. Item fourteen, increase the number of people in Southwest Riverside County with high-end, high-density housing also called affordable housing to make the name more appealing to the people. High-density housing affects all of Southwest Riverside County as well as Northern San Diego County. There may be about one hundred and ten thousand people that live in Temecula right now, even with many people that are moving out due to the incredible traffic problems on our freeways and obtuse California laws. The increase of high-density housing and the loss of those that can leave will make this area more like Los Angeles than the quaint city that it is now. People come here to escape LA. The more people here will also increase the number of people in contact with each other, which will increase the number of people that spread diseases such as COVID nineteen and future COVID-type diseases. Also, where is the mitigation for traffic issues? Fix traffic first and then talk about more people. The next speaker is Sarah Peyton. According to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine, housing element Temecula is required to produce four thousand one hundred eighty-three housing units. It however does not answer how or what specific types of housing this will include. Yet the council approved an entire community heirloom farms off of Inez and Date Street with no provisions for attainable homeownership for the local workforce nor any affordable housing. The housing element also states that the previous housing element for two thousand thirteen to twenty twenty determined that one thousand four hundred ninety-three units were needed. Was this accomplished? With the current housing element, the median Temecula home is five hundred thousand and requires an income of a hundred and twenty-five thousand in order to qualify. Sixty thousand, I'm sorry, sixty percent of Temecula's population does not earn enough to qualify for homeownership within their own community. The average rent for an apartment in Temecula is two thousand eleven dollars again, according to the current housing element. How is the city addressing the need for starter homes for the local economic workforce? Rentals create zero upward mobility and with rent being so out of touch with income levels, it inhibits the ability to save for better. How does the council plan to address the need for homeownership for the local economic workforce? What is the council's resistance to discussing the merits of a proposal brought by a local workforce community member? Please consider Lamont's proposal. The next speaker is Jennifer Cornelius. According to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine, housing element Temecula is required to produce four thousand one hundred and eighty-three housing units. It however does not answer how or what type, what specific types of housing this will include. Yet the council approved an entire community heirloom farms off of Inez and Date Street with no provisions for attainable homeownership for the local workforce nor any affordable housing. The housing element also states that the previous housing element for two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty determined one thousand four hundred ninety-three units were needed. Was this accomplished? With the current housing element, the median Temecula home is five hundred thousand and requires an income of a hundred and twenty-five thousand in order to qualify. Sixty percent of Temecula's population does not earn enough to qualify for homeownership within their own community. The average rent for an apartment in Temecula is two thousand and eleven dollars again, according to the current housing element. How is the city addressing the need for starter homes for the local economic workforce? Rentals create zero upward mobility and with rent being so out of touch with income levels, it inhibits the ability to save for better. How does the council plan to address the need for homeownership for the local economic workforce? What is the council's resistance to discussing the merits of a proposal brought by a local workforce community member? Please consider Lamont's proposal. The next speaker is Tammy Eppi. I recently watched the video entitled Housing Element Workshop Number One provided by the city of Temecula. According to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine housing element Temecula is required to produce four thousand one hundred eighty-three housing units. What types of housing is that supposed to include? The Temecula City Council approved the building of a community called Heirloom Farms. However, there are no provisions that this community must include affordable housing for the local workforce. Why are there no provisions for attainable homeownership? The housing element also stated that the previous housing element for two thousand thirteen to twenty determined that one thousand four hundred ninety-three units were needed for affordable housing. Was this accomplished? If so, where are these units? The current housing element states that the median home price for Temecula is five hundred thousand and that the income to qualify for this price of home is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. By this standard, my family would not qualify for the home we purchased here in two thousand and seven. According to the current housing element, the average rent for an apartment in Temecula is two thousand and eleven dollars. This is more than my current mortgage. How is the city addressing the need for starter homes for the local economic workforce? Rentals create zero upward mobility and with rent being so expensive, it's impossible for families to save money for a home. Today's real estate market in Temecula is a price gouge where people are offering tens of thousands over the asking price just to be competitive. Everyday working families are not going to be able to afford to live in Temecula, a city that prides itself on being a safe, family-friendly Mecca. I know Laurel Lamont has created a proposal that addresses housing issues for the local workforce. Her proposal in ten years is, her proposal is ten years in the making. Why is the council resistant to discussing the merits of a proposal? She is a local workforce community member, so she knows what is needed. The topic is going to keep coming up, so what action are you, the city council, going to take at this point? You cannot pretend you don't know because these public comments have been made repeatedly. Please act now. Thank you. The next speaker is Jay Barry. According to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine housing element Temecula is required to produce four thousand one hundred eighty-three housing units. It however does not answer how or what specific types of housing this will include. Yet the council approved an entire community heirloom farms off of Inez and Date Street with no provisions for attainable homeownership for the local workforce nor any affordable housing. The housing element also states that the previous housing element previous housing element for two thousand thirteen to twenty determined one thousand four hundred ninety-three units were needed. Was this accomplished? With the current housing element, the median Temecula home is five hundred thousand and requires an income of a hundred and twenty-five thousand in order to qualify. Sixty percent of Temecula's population does not earn enough to qualify for homeownership within their own community. The average rent for an apartment in Temecula is two thousand and eleven dollars again, according to the current housing element. How is the city addressing the need for starter homes for the local economic workforce? Rentals create zero upward mobility and with rent being so out of touch with income levels, it inhibits the ability to save for better. How does the council plan to address the need for homeownership for the local economic workforce? What is the council's resistance to discussing the merits of a proposal bought by a local workforce community member? Please consider Lamont's proposal. The next speaker is Karen Finley. I'm excited to see affordable housing is on your agenda for discussion. According to data obtained from official city sources, the median price for a home in Temecula is five hundred thousand and requires an annual income of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to qualify. Based on this information, sixty percent of Temecula's households are locked out of homeownership in their own community. Moreover, the average rent for an apartment in Temecula is two thousand and eleven dollars. I have the privilege of working alongside Laurel Lamont at Trader Joe's. The job is arduous by nature, leaving most of us physically exhausted and mentally drained. Yet in spite of this, Laurel has tirelessly looked for practical ways to be a part of the solution for the very real housing crisis in Temecula. We have discussed the challenges at length and we are concerned that Temecula city leadership may not be receiving feedback from the people in the area about how difficult the situation is. We are convinced that our community is still in great need of effective change to help all families find a path to homeownership. I know Temecula is committed to this goal and that programs have been implemented in the past to address the problem. While steps have been taken, the current situation remains very problematic for families trying to move forward in our community. This is the spirit of my inquiry. I sincerely hope city leadership will seriously consider the ideas Laurel has put forward to address the housing problem. If Temecula City Council has other plans and programs in motion that the public is not yet aware, I would appreciate hearing what those plans are. I've thoroughly searched through the city website content and cannot find anything specific about what is actually being done. There is a lack of information available about what has been accomplished. I can find only general information that the city is trying to do something, but no data about actual results. As a member of the community being served, I'm looking for evidence that city leadership empathizes with the people of the community. Thank you for your time. The next speaker is Mary Ames. I'm writing to add to comments that I've made at your January and February meetings with regard to the need for affordable housing in Temecula and the advantages of a more diverse housing supply that will and the and the advantages a more diverse housing supply will bring to our community. Tonight, I expected agenda item number fourteen to include a written report that anyone interested in this matter could read to understand exactly how our city plans to meet its obligations specifically to meet the need for the four thousand one hundred eighty-three affordable units so clearly described at the Housing Element Workshop last September as Temecula's share of the affordable homes the region will need to, will need in the next eight years, but no report has been issued. Instead, Mr. Watson, the Director of Community Development, is to make a presentation to be received and filed. I will listen carefully to Mr. Watson's presentation. I will be more than disappointed, as every resident should, if he fails to provide the details of an imaginative action plan that will result in the construction of those four thousand one hundred eighty-three residents in the next eight years. I know it's not the city's responsibility to actually build the houses, but the city is obligated to make sure the land is available for them and to encourage other entities to do the construction. I trust that the city council is honorable enough to conclude from the desperate needs for those for the, from the desperate need for those homes, that it must do everything in its power to see that they are actually built to establish public-private partnership, to encourage nonprofit developers to build them, float bonds to finance supportive public services, meet with banks to promote special financing arrangements. I will also count on Mr. Watson during the historical part of his presentation to tell us how many of the one thousand four hundred ninety-three affordable homes identified as Temecula's share in the city's two thousand thirteen housing element have actually been built. How sad for a city of Temecula stature merely to report that it had done the minimum required by identifying land on which those homes could be built. Fifty years ago, I lived in a 50 years ago, I lived in a city that had about 110,000 people, roughly the number Temecula has now. As a young adult, I saw how that city council's pursuit of a plan to have a diverse housing supply provided the opportunity to create advantages. Temecula lacks tightly knit neighborhoods designed for people to interact with each other, a workforce with the diversity of skills and talents that a city needs to grow and thrive, a housing inventory with a broad enough price range to ensure the continuous upward mobility of its residents, a workforce that lives close to their jobs and the resulting reduction in traffic and pollution, and perhaps most important of all, a city where a broad spectrum of ideas could be shared. If you, our leaders, merely go through the motions of soliciting a staff presentation on affordable housing, then vote to receive and file it away. You will do this community a serious disservice. You will have missed the opportunity to make a good community stronger, healthier, more diverse, and better. And after all, isn't that your duty? I did also get one late comment. And that is from Melissa Bourbonis. According to public data, the median price for a home in Temecula is 500,000 and requires an annual income of 125,000 to qualify. Based on this information, 60% of Temecula households are locked out of homeownership in their, in their own community. Moreover, the average rent for an apartment in Temecula is $2,011. So-called affordable housing is finally on the agenda for discussion. Out of respect for the overwhelming majority of your constituency, please answer the following questions. Why did council approve heirloom farms off of Inez and Date Street with no provisions for attainable homeownership for the local workforce or any affordable housing? 60% of Temecula's households cannot afford to buy a home. Therefore, why didn't council negotiate better terms for the affordable housing developments currently in the pipeline? In other words, why does the city give developer millions of dollars in grants and property but fail to negotiate basic living standards such as washer and dryer hookups or dishwashers? Laurel Lamont submitted her attainable homeownership proposal in April 2020. Nearly a year later, with 60% of Temecula's households unable to purchase a home, why has council refused to discuss the merits of this proposal? What action steps will council take beyond the presentation of an informative video to address the need for starter homes for the local economic workforce? Please note, these questions are not rhetorical. In addition to my full-time job, I also teach part-time and navigate the demands of a family. I rarely have a day off, but I nonetheless dedicate my personal time to researching housing policies and working alongside Laurel Lamont to create solutions to the housing crisis. I think it's clear that I am not interested in befriending council members, but in strictly advocating for the local workforce. I do this because it's how I'm wired. I care far more about the health and well-being of others than about what's trending on YouTube or TikTok. However, my time is valuable. Please don't disregard it by ignoring the questions we've raised or the work we've done. Less 60% of Temecula's households locked out of homeownership. It would be an injustice to continue to ignore us. Let us come to the table and work with you to, to create attainable homeownership. Madam Mayor, that is the last of the public comments.
Okay, so now we're gonna, Luke, are you ready to go?
I am.
All right, Luke Watson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here real quick. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Good. Well, again, Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm going to be, as you, as you know already, giving a presentation regarding housing in the city of Temecula. We're gonna discuss many things tonight. And I, I wanna set some ground rules, give you a sense of what the presentation's gonna be like before we get into it. And the first question, of course, is, is why are we here? And of course, that was because it was at council's request, most basically. But I also think that it's a confluence of issues and timing, and it is good timing for, for a presentation like this, for a discussion like this to begin. Of course, we're in the middle of what many consider to be a serious housing crisis, which it is, which is primarily shortage, and we'll discuss that. But it's also a good time because the general plan is underway. A major component of that is the Housing Element, which is in process right now. The drafting of the six-cycle Housing Element is, is underway right now. So, and I know we have, we've, as we've just heard, we've been receiving considerable community feedback and concerns regarding the housing issue and, and for good reason. So it is good timing and in terms of the presentation tonight, it is a receive and file. Well, that doesn't mean that, of course, there's not gonna be vigorous conversation about the, the different issues that I, that I covered. And I'm gonna cover multiple topics from the housing crisis to the history of housing production in the city of Temecula, the regional housing needs assessment, as well as Ms. Lamont's proposal and other concerns that her group has raised. I, I provided breaks, so there's, there's, there's different sections in the presentation tonight. And I, I have provided breaks at the, at, at the end of each section for council discussion and questions because it is a very long presentation. I do apologize for that upfront, but there's, there's just a lot to cover. So I will break and I will turn over the mayor for questions and comments at that time. And you're gonna see a lot of data, a lot of graphs. But I, I just wanted to mention that this is not an academic exercise. All of the data that we're using is readily available from Housing Community Development, the State Department of Finance, other state sources. We're not trying to make any kind of empirical argument here. We're just trying to be the messenger of the data as it exists today. And the discussion is a broad, high-level analysis. So we're going to, we're not, there's not one particular point that we're gonna drill down, all the way down onto. I think that's for future discussions. And, and I think that this really is the beginning of the discussion as we kind of move into the public outreach portion of the Housing Element primarily. This is a foundational kind of presentation to kind of look at where we've been, look at what we've done as a city over the last 30 years or so, so we can have that foundation as we look forward to the next chapter, as we develop the Housing Element over the next year or so. So, like I mentioned, there's five, there's five key sections that we'll be going through tonight, talking about the housing crisis. And, and very importantly, we'll be talking about the state of California's response to the housing crisis in, in, in pretty extensive detail. And then we'll be talking about Temecula's historical market rate, housing production, Temecula's historical affordable housing production. And that's in quotes, because that's, when I say affordable and it's in quotes, that means somehow it's a government subsidized, rent-restricted type of development. And then finally, we'll be talking about the community concerns and proposals that have been put forth by Ms. Lamont and her group. So, without further to do, I'm just gonna jump into the first section, which is a broad overview of the housing crisis, crisis, which is, which is really a shortage. And it doesn't seem like you can go very far these days without a headline about the housing crisis every single day. Just about there's a, something in the paper about some new law or some new issue pertaining to the housing crisis. And, you know, I, it's so prevalent that even Wikipedia has a page on the California housing shortage. I thought that was sadly humorous, that, that there's a page regarding that. And it is really the, before COVID showed up, it was the number one issue for the state of California in terms of their legislation, legislation that they were moving forward and their focus and the amount of money they're putting towards it. And it was, it was the number one issue before COVID. And when COVID's gone, it'll be the number one issue when it's gone. So the key question, of course, is how did California end up with a housing shortage? Right? This is, this is the key question. And to understand that, I think we have to go all the way back to our very first econ class we ever had, the very first day, where we talked about the, the ideas of, you know, the concept of supply and demand. And that's, that's really what the housing crisis boils down to. So let's talk about the demand side first. And this is really the demand right here, California population. It has been increasing pretty steadily since 1940. The post-war population growth has been essentially linear. It's been about five, it's been growing about 5 million people per decade. And we're supposed to top out this year around 40.3 million people. Now, that's a lot of people. It's the, the, the population estimates are continuing to increase through 2045, although they do slow down. So we probably won't see this linear growth over the next decade or two. But that is, that is the, that is the demand side. It has been steady and increasing for, you know, 70 or 80 years. So what about the supply side? And this is where the problem really begins. So what are we, what are we looking at here? This is a graph showing California home production from 1954 to 2016. So this is the modern era in California. Single-family homes' production per year is represented by the, the orange bars and multifamily is represented by the blue bars. So this is all housing production per year. And if you remember back to the, the, the population graph, it was a pretty even or consistent growth pattern since 1940. So you could assume that the state would need to produce an even number of units per year to meet that demand. And the state of California's Housing Community Development has pegged that number at 180,000 units or roughly about there per year. And that black line you see there represents that 180,000-unit threshold, and that's just to meet demand every single year. So what do we see? So from 1954 to 1989, we see many years in surplus of demand in production in California. And it's almost two-to-one year surplus to deficit. And if you smooth this out and filled in all the deficit years with the surplus years, you actually end up with a slight slur, surplus from 1954 to 1989. So that's a healthy market, that's a market in equilibrium. But what we see starting in 1990 is a complete disruption of the housing supply, development and construction cycle. It just completely fell off. And you see a, a huge deficit from 1990 to 2016. And obviously, that's just the latest data that we have on this slide. It's continued. We haven't reached the 180,000-unit threshold since 2004 and 2005. And, and just to note, 14 of 15 years below the 100,000-unit production mark have been since 1990. Seven of the eight lowest years since 1954 have been since 1990. This is really the seeds of a housing crisis. They call it a housing crisis, but that's a little misleading because a crisis is like COVID. COVID came out of nowhere, shocked everybody. We all had to react with limited knowledge. This has been in the works since the end of the 80s. So what is the result of housing underproduction? Well, first, the, the state has estimated that there's somewhere around, there's, there's, there's a deficit in units in the state of California of around 3.5 million units right now. And that's just to meet demand right now. That's not moving forward. Now, there, there's argument about whether that number's correct, but if, some say it's lowers, you know. But we'll, you know, the, the official state line is 3.5 million. And that has led, of course, to the highest in nation price appreciation over time. So this, this graph is just showing the median home price in $2,015. And what you see is from 1940 to 1970, price appreciation grows proportionally with the rest of the country. The dark bar is California, the light bar is the United States as a whole. And once we get to 1980, which tracks with the graph we saw before, when, when production fell off, you see massive increases in price, price appreciation relative to the rest of the United States. What we see here is median home value. You see the top 25 states here by population. This is their median home value, so this is the US average. And this is California. It's more than two and a half times the, the national average. This is all stuff we know, but it's, it's, it's good to go over it and really take a look at it and see how, how long this has really been going on. So that's, that's just on the market rate side. That's just housing production in aggregate. But what about affordable housing underproduction? You know, the, the, and I, I think I should mention again, affordable housing is government subsidized residential development that is rent or purchase price restricted and tenant income-based. So I just wanna, I, I wanna repeat that throughout because I don't wanna get, I don't want there to be confusion with technically affordable and what's affordable to me. Those are two different things. So there has been underproduction in, in affordable housing. In, in fact, California Housing Partnership put out a report and their claim is that of the 3.5 million units deficit in the state, 1.4 million of those are, are needed for households that would qualify as low-income, meaning those households can't afford market-rate units. So why is there under, underproduction of affordable housing? Well, the same macroeconomic forces that are, that are pushing on market rate are also pushing on affordable housing development with one key difference. Affordable housing relies on state funding, state, local counties or city funding. And what we see here is a chart showing the sources of state funding for affordable housing from 2008 to 2019. And you can see local redevelopment agencies, which the city had, which the city used very vigorously to produce affordable housing, was, was investing at $2.5 billion across the state per year in affordable housing. In 2012, redevelopment agencies were eliminated, taking 2.5 billion a year in investment down to zero. And as you can see, as you go through time to 2019, there hasn't been anything close to a replacement of those funds. You see a slight increase here in 2019, but upon closer examination, that, the, the majority of that increase is from ballot propositions and additional taxes, which includes tax measures not available to all cities. So for example, LA passed a $1 billion proposition for affordable housing. That money is included in this graph, but only available to the city of Los Angeles. So it's a little misleading there. That's basically it. There's, the funding source for affordable housing has been completely eliminated. So just in summary, for the housing crisis portion of the, of the presentation, it's really, it's the seeds of the housing crisis is a supply and demand issue. Steadily increasing demand, massive deficit in production over 30-plus years. The supply side has led to huge increases in, excuse me, in the home prices. And the elimination of funding for affordable housing without any kind of substitute has obviously led to the lack of resources to produce sufficient subsidized units, whether it be for sale or that be for rent. So Madam Mayor, that concludes the first section of the period. I'll back over to you for discussion and questions.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions?
I do got a question.
Go ahead, Stu.
Yeah, so maybe, Luke, you can answer this. If, if there was an affordable housing element for the city of Temecula, would it be something that we could restrict to only Temecula residents? You know, because that's my whole, my whole thought here is if we, if we did some sort of affordable housing, would it be something that we would? Because my industry, that the hair, the hair industry is exactly the people that we're talking about. It's, it's exactly those people who are, you know, in that lower-income strata. They're not gonna make $125,000 a year, and yet they're, they're struggling to fight to keep up with rental increases. So, so, you know, I totally hear what they're saying. And, and so, but again, I don't know if it's within our power to be able to force an industry to accept our demands on that property or that, you know. So it's kinda, kinda balk with me on that. Tell me a little bit.
So the quick answer to the question is, can we, can the city discriminate on the basis of the Temecula residency in affordable housing?
Oh, correct.
No.
Okay.
No. So that answers that question. Another thing here is that I'm, I'm actually, you're thinking ahead of, ahead of me. I have a whole section on this, which is, which is good. So if, if you could bear with me, I think we'll get to all those questions. And we can, we can talk them through along with all the other questions that have been asked. That's okay.
Okay.
So, anybody else? Jack?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, you know, before we get too deep into this, I, I wanna just take a brief second to sort of acknowledge and, and thank Luke for doing this, right? This is a big deal. And, and I think it's such a big deal that for as a council, for us, these topics, I think are important for us to hear exactly what's going on, what we have done, what we haven't done, what we will do, what we can do, what we can't do. So I, I think the overall conversation I'm, I'm engaged in, I'm excited to hear tonight. But I certainly just wanna at least take this second before we get too deep in the weeds on this to, to just thank you for taking the time to do this. And, and let's not apologize for how long this is. This is a complex problem that we have right now, and we need to take the time, we need to dig deep, and we need to, to look for solutions. So, you know, we can get through this presentation, and if it takes us a couple hours. we can get through this presentation, um, and, and if it takes us a couple hours, it takes us a couple hours. Um, you know, that's what we're here for. But again, I just wanted to, I know your shop is busy. Uh, Chair Gario gave a presentation on everything you've done over the last year during pandemic. Um, and so I know, uh, you've had your head down for the last little bit getting this done. So I just don't want that to go overlooked. Um, and I hope the community appreciates this as much as I do, and, and I believe that my council colleagues do as well. So, um, I have some questions, a ton of notes, but I will sort of wait till the end to, to unleash all those on everyone.
Are you sure? Because that, we, we made the breaks just for that reason.
Well, I think some of the ones I had don't fit into this little section for Luke. I mean, on the supply side, we need to get creative, right? Like, we need to absolutely get creative with ADUs, which were, which we already have in ordinance, which we're working on plans. You know, microhousing, we could talk about the mall. We, what are we gonna do in Uptown Jefferson? I mean, there's a lot of, lot of opportunities for us to be, um, pretty nimble and maybe not do things, um, you know, do, do things a little bit differently with respect to housing. One thing I will say, um, and I sort of, it was brought up in some of the comments that how density is somehow bad. Um, people didn't, um, flee density because of COVID. Um, they fled because there was nothing left to do. The, the museums and the things that people love to do in the city, uh, they, they needed some space, right? And so if you wanna talk about, uh, the suburbs, which is what we are, um, the housing demand here in our city is off the charts right now because we have fairly large lots, a lot of pool homes, and those homes are going off the market, um, lickety-split. So, uh, you know, to say density is bad, um, concentrated poverty is bad, um, density is not necessarily bad. So I just sort of wanted to acknowledge.
The key, Zach, is a lot of people, they, they associate poverty with affordable, the people who live in affordable housing. But that was gonna be my question, Luke. So give us an idea. A family of four can make fifty, is it fifty-eight thousand dollars a year? And still be considered, um, qualified for affordable housing?
Well, it's, it's, it's a sliding scale. So it's a major, depends on, um, how many people live in the home. So that's a determining factor.
Yeah.
It depends on what income strata you're talking about. A hundred and twenty percent of AMI area median income, eighty percent of area median income, and so on and so forth down, down the strata. But for a family of four at the median income, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty? Eighty thousand dollars. So I think people are shocked when they hear that because they're thinking of people who, you know, maybe, um, are making minimum wage or twenty thousand dollars a year or students going to school, but that's not it at all. Um, you know, there's eighty thousand dollars is not a salary to sneeze at either. So I think that's a misnomer that we, we need to better inform people what affordable housing is. And then the people who live in affordable housing are, you know, teachers right out of college or, you know, new police officers or firemen or stew, you know, um, people who work i- in, uh, barber shops and the people that waste. So, um, there are neighbors, really. So, no, any other questions? Okay, we're good. Onto the next section.
Okay, so the next section is, um, is, has to do with the state's response to the housing crisis. So, um, as we mentioned before, the housing crisis has, stage has been set over, uh, many decades. And, uh, the state began making, uh, this issue a top priority around two thousand, around two thousand and fifteen. That's when we started seeing, uh, more legislation regarding it. Um, so of course, what it has been the state's policy reaction to housing underproduction and a lack of affordable housing funding. And frankly, we have to look back to two thousand and fifteen when the Legislative Analyst Office, um, which is kind of an organ of the legislature who make, it's a, it's a nonpartisan group that makes policy recommendations to the legislature for their consideration. They made, uh, three primary recommendations that have largely been made into, uh, official state policy and legislation. The first, um, was to build more housing, do it in the coastal urban areas and do it densely. And this is, this is the regional housing needs assessment, and I'll go into that in a few moments. The second was to spur private market housing production via legislation, primarily removing many land use decisions from local control. The state's position is that there's a housing shortage because local jurisdictions don't wanna build housing. That's the state's official position. Three, instead of redevelopment style affordable housing system, the state has targeted programs that it controls for affordable housing that are targeted at very specific populations. So I'm gonna go through each one of those in a little more detail. So strategy one, which was build more housing, do it in the coastal urban areas and do it densely. So the state's main strategy here to meet this goal is the regional housing needs assessment, which I'll refer to as RENA. So what is the, what is RENA? I'm gonna attempt to explain RENA in four bullet points.
Good luck.
First, the state claims that there are three point five million homes that need to be built within the next eight years. That's the state's position. The state then allocates a portion of those three point five million units to different NPOs or metropolitan planning organizations, which the city of Temecula is part of the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG, that's our NPO. The state gave SCAG one point three million units to be produced over the next eight years. SCAG then divides up that allocation of one point three million units amongst cities and counties within its jurisdiction. And just so you know, that Temecula's allotment from that one point three million is four thousand one hundred and ninety-three over the next eight years, starting in two thousand and twenty-two. So that's what RENA is. That's how we got four thousand one hundred and ninety-three units in the city of Temecula to be produced over the next eight years. I think it's good to do a comparison here, uh, between the fifth and sixth cycle. We're in the fifth cycle. And the numbers I just mentioned are for the sixth cycle. So the fifth cycle, um, which was from two thousand and fourteen to, which will, and will end at the end of this year, the whole entire SCAG region got four hundred and twelve thousand units to divvy up amongst Los Angeles, which had forty-four percent. Orange had nine percent. Riverside had a full quarter of that allotment. San Bernardino had fourteen, Ventura had five, and Imperial had four. That's the fifth cycle that we're in now. This is the sixth cycle, and this, this is really represent, representative of the state's recognition of the housing crisis. You can see that the allocation from the fifth cycle to the sixth cycle has gone up more than three-fold. So from four hundred and twelve to one point three million for the SCAG region. But what we have seen is a shift based on the strategy, which is build more housing, do it in the coastal urban areas, not in places like Riverside or San Bernardino, and do it densely. You see a shift in the total percentage of the allocation moving towards Los Angeles, towards Orange County. So for instance, in the fifth cycle, Los Angeles received forty-four percent of the allocation. In the sixth cycle, they rece- received sixty-one percent. Orange County went from nine percent to fourteen, while Riverside went from a full quarter down to twelve percent of the allocation. San Bernardino went down to ten from fourteen, so on Ventura, five to two, and Imperial four to one. This is a recognition of the need to put housing where the most people are, where the most demand is, which is in the coastal urban areas. So, uh, again, Temecula's share of the fifth cycle was fourteen thousand, or excuse me, one thousand four hundred and ninety-three. Temecula's six cycle shares, four thousand one hundred and ninety-three. I wanted, and this dr- uh, addresses directly the question um, posed by many of the public commenters. Our fifth cycle requirement under RENA was for one thousand four hundred and ninety-three. The city has currently produced one thousand seven hundred and fourteen. So we're well ahead of our RENA requirement for the fifth cycle, and we still have a year left. And I think it's actually gonna be the, the, the most productive housing year of the entire cycle. So, um, we're in good shape there.
We're actually ahead of what's required.
That's correct.
Right there, that, how many cities are able to make that claim right now? Within SCAG?
Um, not many.
No.
Not many. No, I, I don't, I don't think there's, there's many that can. So, you know, like I said, we're, we're in good shape there. And there's gonna be, there's gonna be a few hundred more before it's all said and done by the end of this year with Somers Bend and some of the other projects that are coming online. So, uh, very good shape there. Um, just a side note, and I don't have this data in, it's just a matter of too much data, but, um, there's only been one housing element cycle that the city didn't overproduce, uh, relative to its RENA requirement. And that was, uh, the two thousand and eight RENA, which of course was the time
Recession.
The, the, the great recession, the bubble burst, the elimination, basically no housing production took place in, in the entire country during that cycle. So.
So we're actually ahead of, we have been ahead of required production all along.
In, in the, the first housing element cycle, we beat it by eight hundred and ninety-three percent. So, and I can bring those numbers to the council in a future conversation, so we can take a look at those. So we're in good shape here. The second strategy that the state is implementing is to spur private housing development via legislation, reducing local control. So, the, again, the state's position is that there, the undersupply is due to local jurisdictions opposition to housing production. In my professional opinion, that does not apply to the city of Temecula.
No.
It did, and we'll get into it a little bit later, but you'll see that as soon as housing dropped off in the state, that's when housing ramped up in the city of Temecula. But nevertheless, this is the city's, or the state's position. Um, and, and they have, they followed through. They have enacted copious amounts of bills. This is just a small sample of the bills that have been, uh, the housing related bills that have been approved by the legislature that do exactly what they said they would do. They reduce local control. So, for example, they prohibit imposing a moratorium on housing within a city or, or county without HCD approval. They prohibit adopting any new subjective design standards. So that's the standards of what things can look like, um, that the city is primarily responsible for. We can't, we can't, uh, adopt any new ones for housing. Um, it prohibits establishing or implementing a limit on the number of land use approvals or construction permits for housing. Um, and, and lastly, just as an example, prohibits capping the number of housing units that may be approved or constructed, or even limiting the city's population. So, a- and again, that's just an example, but you can see, you know, the intent, and, and it's been highly, it's been, it's been successful. They've done a lot to reduce. And finally, the third strategy, which is targeting funding for affordable housing. So this is, like I mentioned, there's not, at least right now, there's no discussion that I know of, of re-implementing a redevelopment style funding source for affordable housing for cities uh, and local jurisdictions. I just don't see that happening, maybe, but I haven't heard anything about it. What the state wants is more state-controlled funding sources that are allocated for narrow and specific populations. So, for example, the no place like home program, which is a two billion dollar program, um, and it is strictly for homeless transitional housing. You have SB two, among other things, it has two billion dollars for, just for vets. Um, and, and there are other things too. There aren't just funding sources, the restrictions on funding that we already have. So SB three forty-one um, prohibits cities or former redevelopment agencies, um, from expending any of their residual redevelopment dollars on any project that serves any income classification above eighty percent. So they're really, they're really pushing us to use our money in the very low income strata categories, which is, which is tough because, um, if we wanted to do, say the city wanted to do a for-sale workforce housing, single-family home product, that's typically a hundred and twenty percent AMI, um, income strata. That's because that's how much you would need to qualify and be able to, to maintain the home and service a mortgage. It just works out that way. We can't even, the city can't even use its funds for that type of purpose.
And it's still not affordable.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Still not affordable.
Well, it would be affordable, but we can't use former RDA dollars to help subsidize that project. So it would be affordable to someone making a hundred and twenty percent AMI, but we can't, we can't participate in the funding of that project. So it limits the city's control over its own money. So in, in summary, on the state's response to the housing crisis, we, we, we've seen it. They, they, the state has taken the Legislative Analyst Office, uh, recommendations to a T. And, you know, it's, it, we've seen it with RENA, and we've seen it with legislation, and we've seen it with the elimination of RDA and the implementation of very strict and controlled, uh, targeted affordable housing, um, programs that the state is now implementing. So that concludes this section, Madam Mayor, and I'll open up for discussion, questions?
Questions? I have a comment, though. They have taken away the one source that we had to fund affordable housing, and we did it beautifully and consistently and very successfully, as was demonstrated, because we were ahead of the curve every step of the way. And then they further restricted it by narrowing the qualifications for particular funding. So you had homeless and veterans. Not that there's anything wrong with doing transitional housing or homes for veterans, heavens. But that's the only thing you can do, right, with those funds? So they're restricted.
Very much so.
So on the one hand, they're making it much more difficult for cities to entice developers because that's really all we can do is to try and entice developers to build housing that they will not make any money off of. In fact, they will lose money on it unless they can go for other sources of funding outside of the city, which would be federal dollars or things like that. And there are some, uh, builders that do that. And we have several of those, uh, several of those, um, units in town. So they've made it much harder for us to do it, and yet they're requiring more. And there's your government in action.
I do have a question, Madam Mayor.
Sure, Stu.
Okay, so, uh, Luke, so does additional, uh, the ADUs, are they counted in RENA numbers? Or is that something that is, um, considered additional housing?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Every ADU is considered a unit.
Okay.
Satisfying the RENA requirement.
And let's explain what that is one more time, is that the state passed a law that said cities cannot restrict individuals in single-family residences from building a second house on their property. And was it regardless of the size of the property?
No, there's, there's minimum development standards. So there's minimum setback requirements. Um, so, so it's not just anywhere, but it's most places, um, that the standards are, are, are minimal, and then they're intended to be so. And, and just so everyone knows, an ADU is, is an accessory dwelling unit. It really just means a second unit on your property. State passed legislation that, um, made that, uh, uh, a possibility for any homeowner by right. So the city cannot say no to that.
Yep.
Unless they, unless they, uh, don't meet, for instance, a five-foot setback requirement from the property line. Um, and it's, and, and there are a few other things. It has to meet building codes, obviously, for safety. But they're very, very minimal, which is really a, an enticing of homeowners to build ADUs in their backyards.
But it's taking those control, that control away from cities and from, um, HOAs, by the way.
That's right. HOAs are prohibited from prohibiting ADUs.
Yep. Zach?
Yeah, thank you, uh, very much, Madam Mayor. I wanted to really sort of highlight, you know, that last section is important. You know, as the SCAG representative for the cities of Temecula, Myriad, and Menifee, um, I've had the, the privilege of of digesting a lot of this over the last year or so. And, um, you know, there are a lot of cities, and listen, I don't wanna throw other cities under the bus, but unfortunately, there are a lot of cities in our SCAG region that want nothing to do with building any more homes, right? They're just absolutely one hundred percent, um, against that, right? And, and it falls into the, you know, the character of my community and property values. And, and a lot of these arguments, um, are interesting, um, to say the least. Um, the, the thing that I, one of the last conversations we had at SCAG was about local control. And a, a council member from Huntington Beach, if I recall correctly, brought it up about just the idea of if you're, if you're always saying no, um, the state's gonna take away that local control from you, right? Like, and, and I don't think there's anyone on this, uh, this meeting or any of these councils that, that really want the state to come in and fully take that away. But then, you know, you think about it, um, maybe housing is one of those things that is better, um, decided at the state level, right? Like, we, we, the state regulates cars and, and freeways. Imagine if every city was like, um, building their own portion of the freeway and sort of saying, well, I only want this in my town. So, um, it's just an interesting conversation to have. I know, you know, we've met those and exceeded those, uh, numbers, the, those RENA numbers, and just housing in general. But I just really wanted to, and, and maybe this is a topic for another conversation, but just reminding folks of what that SCAG region looks like, what Southern California in general looks like from a housing production standpoint. It wasn't that long ago that Temecula was affordable, right?
Yes.
Like, I came here twenty-plus years ago because it was affordable, right? Like, I lived in San Diego and, um, I walked across the street and couldn't afford the house across the street, um, no matter how many jobs I worked, right? And so, yeah, there's just a little perspective on that that I think is important as well. Um, things have, um, ex- escalated exponentially, uh, to Luke's first part of that presentation. It is part of the reason. um, exponentially, uh, to Luke's first part of that presentation. It is part of the reason why. Um, but again, I just wanted to remind everybody that what it sort of looks like outside of our little bubble and, and what other cities are doing and, and redevelopment went, went away. Uh, maybe there were some abuses in other cities and whatnot, which is probably why it went away. So, um, you know, it's an uphill battle for us, but just, um, a little perspective.
You just laid out the perfect case for supply and demand. We, it was affordable. I remember the time when you could buy a house for ninety-nine thousand dollars, because we've been here, what, thirty-two years? But
Yeah.
And then we watched that go, a- and, and that's what happened. People started buying homes and that's when the prices started to escalate. So it's, it's supply and demand.
To that point, um, Madam Mayor, you know, if, if my family wanted to move here now with a professional salary that my wife earns, um, we wouldn't be able to afford Temecula.
Yeah.
You know? And, and without that wealth generated over the, the last twenty years of being able to buy in this town, uh, twenty years ago, um, you know, I'd be on the outside looking in too.
And what we don't talk about is the other end of the scale. If you're seniors and you're empty nesters and you want to sell your house or your home, unless you have, uh, you know, you're going to spend all the equity and you're still not going to find a home, that it, it probably costs much less than the house you're in.
Um, you hang on to that home, right? And then you have three thousand square feet of excess space because it's just you and your spouse, you know?
Yes, and you know, and you hope you can continue to pay the taxes.
Yeah.
Um, so it, it, you know, it strikes at the other end of the spectrum too, which, not that I'm a senior citizen or anything, but. Okay, I think we're ready, Luke.
Okay.
Oh, Matt, you got one?
Yeah, just a quick one. Um, so, you know, one of the things I think, uh, probably should clarify is that as homes are built in Temecula, be it, you know, market rate or affordable housing, there are provisions in the law that won't allow us to restrict the sale of those homes to Temecula residents, right?
Right.
Hearing, of course, is, is that, you know, there are residents in our city, and we recognize this, who want to start to build their, their own, you know, um, uh, home and, and, you know, personal wealth and all of that. And we all know that homeownership is a big part of that, uh, that process. Um, but, but there, you know, provisions in the law specifically, uh, prohib- prohibiting us from restricting those new units. And, and, and Zach, you made a great point earlier, which was, there are other cities in our region who, you know, for whatever reason are, um, opposed to new housing development. While we've been meeting our numbers, you know, we're becoming an attractor for, you know, those communities that are not, right? And I, I, you know, I just want to clarify and make sure that I'm characterizing that properly under the law, but that's my understanding, is we don't have that authority to, to be able to advantage our own residents in this process, which frankly, I, I understand the reasons why, but it's also frustrating because, you know, we, we want our residents to, to be successful as well.
And, and if you look at the affordable housing that we do have, it's beautiful. I mean, nice and, and very well maintained. And if you didn't know it was affordable housing, you could drive by and you'd never know it was affordable housing. So, um, yeah, go, go ahead, Luke. It's just very frustrating. Oh, you go, Jessica, go ahead.
So I just want to make, uh, just a quick comment here. You know, over the last couple of weeks that I've been, um, able to drive around the city on the city bus, I've been getting my tour, uh, learning more and more. I, I want to say, you know, with Luke and, um, Greg and Erin, they've been showing me more and more of where you know, the portable houses is going. It is here, it's coming. And I want, I want people to know that it's around the corner. You know what I'm saying? It's, uh, they're building it. We're not just letting people not be able to move in here. You know, we're really taking that to heart. But I will tell you one thing that kind of came to, um, that I was thinking about, and if you can help me with this, Luke, one of the things I think you said on number one for this section was like building more and densely. And I think that's where people, and, and tell me this, like, more people are concerned with that dense population because it's not so much the low po-, you know, the, um, the low income, but just the high density. And I think that's what's scaring people because do we have the infr- infrastructure? You know, we're at a hundred and eleven thousand people here in Temecula. I know I moved here and I'm sure so many other people like, uh, you know, like their property. They, they like a little bit of room. Uh, is that going to scare people off? You know, are we going to lose our residents, uh, like Marion Edwards? You know, we don't want to lose her. Is, but is that gonna, is that gonna be a problem because more people are moving in and we're not going to have the, the space that maybe people want to?
Oh, you wouldn't lose, why would you lose me?
I hope not. No, but I mean, just in general, are we going to lose our ci- our people, our residents who've been here for a long time, who, you know, I look at people who in my district, um, you know, in all the force area and, uh, Santiago Estates, they like their property. They like the, the space. Are we going to begin to see that we're going to lose that? And the high density in the traffic area? I think that's what's on a lot of people's hearts and minds, uh, when we're, when we're talking about high-density housing and I.
Just, you mean, is, is zoning going to change? Is that what you mean?
Well, Luke, have it changed?
I, I think, I think you can address that, that comment. Um, so, uh, the things we can control and the things we can't control. The things we can't control are arena number. That's coming from, directly from the state. We're going to have to accommodate for that, for that number, which is over four thousand units in this next cycle. The things we can't control, where we prepare for those units to be located.
Right.
And we've been doing that, um, well ahead of the state's requirements. We've done a whole host of things. We've done an Old Town specific plan, which allows for up to fifty percent environment to be residential. We did the Uptown specific plan, which is a commercial industrial corridor, right? It's not on the east side of the freeway. It's not, um, near our, um, you know, suburban trap uh, homes or large lot, single-family homes. And we prepared for over four thousand units there through another specific plan. Right? We've, uh, the, the, the city council has adopted the Alter specific plan, which is, um, in the foothills, uh, west of, of Old Town. And that is going to be, you know, what we consider high-density. It's a multi-family development, not super high-density, but, but more than single-family zoning. So what we, and we think we have opportunities in the, to, to potentially look and talk to the council about mixed-use redevelopment of some of our shopping centers. Right? So not to eliminate any commercial, but to add the ability for mixed-use in those environments. That's something we're going to have to talk about, and that's what, that's what the, the, the next few conversations are going to be about as we move towards the housing element adoption. We think in our preliminary analysis here at the staff level, that we can accommodate the four thousand one hundred ninety-three units in everything I just described, and, and a little bit more. And that we will not have to do any rezoning of any single-family residential areas.
Right.
So, um, that's a, that's, that's what we can control. So, and I think, I think as of right now, I think we're in good shape to not have to um, mess with any of the single-family zoning. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah. Now, Luke, last thing, can the state come in? And so I know we're, we want to cap out at about a hundred and thirty-five thousand, I think you had mentioned. Can the state eventually come in and say, uh, that's not okay with us. You need to continue to add more people and more housing.
Yes.
Force our hand on that.
Yes.
Yes.
They can. I mean, that's what, that's what they're doing. That's what they're doing now. I mean, that's the strategy is to adding, as the, adding residential units beyond what our general plan had already analyzed. That one hundred and thirty-five was from, um, you know, what we thought was going to come in in two thousand and five, right? At, at the, at the two thousand and thirty-five marker. Well, we're, as we update our general plan now, the population number in the state of Temecula is going to go up. The, the estimated population, the final build-out population.
So even though we build the four thousand units that are required of us, it'll just roll around again and they'll add another four thousand. That's what, that's the problem.
As long as population continues to increase, that's what I assume they'll do. Yeah, so. But we'll do our best, our absolute best to make sure that that, we're ahead of those requirements and pro- produce, sp- s- specific plans take many, many years to produce on the scale that we've done.
Yeah.
But we can't wait for arena cycle to come around to prepare for these things. And that's why we've done it way ahead, kind of looking into the future, saying, we think this is coming, we better start preparing now. Otherwise, we're going to be flat-footed when, when these numbers come down.
Remember, Lene and I talked about, uh, we know for the planning commission, we waited how long ago? We were both on this, the, um, Temecula Scholarship Foundation at the time, when we were talking about Roar Paw, and that was at least fifteen years ago. And you saw the map, you know, we're just now getting those developers have just now come in and are, are developing that section. So it can, it takes years and, and it, it, you don't drop four thousand units overnight, you know? And you don't drop them all in one place and but still, we, we are forced when we shouldn't be. And that's what the local control issues. Okay, Luke, go ahead and make us happy with this section.
Okay, my best. This one's, um, this one's a good story. This is the next, um, see if I can advance the slide here. Okay, so this next section is the history of housing production in the city of Temecula and the history of private market housing production. The next section will be affordable housing. So just to be clear again, what is private market housing? It's housing that is privately funded, constructed and owned. It's not a, has no direct government subsidy. This is not technical affordable housing. This is probably the house you live in or the, or the, the apartment that you're renting now. If you don't have to qualify based on your income, that's private market housing. So just to take a quick look at the housing stock, um, this is at the end of last year. Uh, we had, uh, a total of about thirty-six, thirty-seven, uh, thousand units in the city. Um, more now, we're, we're adding more every single day. Um, the, but the, the makeup is, is mostly single-family, which is, which is obvious. It's about seventy-eight and a half percent of the total stock, single-family attached. That's like a townhome style, um, product is, is three point six. Multi-family, you know, your, 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 your apartment development is about seventeen and a half, and then we have a hundred and sixty mobile homes in one mobile home park, just less than half of the percent of the total stock. So when was Temecula housing stock built? And I think we all know this, but I think it, it, it's an important conversation to have because it is juxtaposed to the supply and demand issue I described earlier, which is at the end of the eighties, the, the rest of the state just fell off a cliff in housing production and nineteen eighty through two thousand and eighteen is really when Temecula built all of its, you know, the vast majority of its housing units. So you can see that ninety-two percent, ninety-three percent of all Temecula housing units have been built since nineteen eighty, seventy-one point six since nineteen ninety, and that number is actually going to go up as we continue to build housing. So it seems to me, in my viewing of the data, is that as the rest of the state went into a complete meltdown in housing production, the city of Temecula ramped up and actually was, was working to be part of the solution with whatever means it was able to do, um, which was quite a bit. So from, in the eighties, there was seventy-seven hundred units produced. In the nineties, it was over twelve thousand, two thousand nine, no, two thousand, two thousand nine, over twelve thousand. And then you see a drop-off in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eighteen, and that's really for two reasons. That's the housing crisis, the credit bubble, the great recession. And also there wasn't that much land to build on. We have a few, um, uh, tract developments that were still left to build, but w- I, I doubt we'll ever see a twelve thousand unit decade ever again in the city of Temecula. This is a natural progression, maybe not this dramatic without the recession, but, uh, we're, we're not, we're never going to be, uh, doing something like this, uh, I, I think, ever again in the future, which is a normal progression for a city. So this one, this section, this por- portion of this section, I, I, I think is really interesting. And, and I think the narrative that most people understand about Temecula is that people moved here for many reasons, but one of the main reasons was inexpensive housing relative to San Diego, Orange County, LA. That's a kind of a, a grand narrative of the city of Temecula. It has produced, um, you know, decades worth of affordable housing, uh, comparatively across California. And, and, um, but we, we, we kind of wanted to know, you know, exactly how affordable was it? You know, was it, was it affordable to people making two hundred percent of the area median income? Because they were coming from high, uh, salary jobs in those areas. Um, you know, what income levels was it affordable to? And was the private market, we, we asked the question, was the private market producing what would otherwise be considered affordable housing to low-income households throughout the history of the city of Temecula? So what we have here is, um, I'm going to go through a series of graphs. I'm going to try to do it as succinctly as possible. But this chart here is, uh, the median home price in the city of Temecula from January of nineteen ninety to January of twenty twenty. So you can see that the time scales on the, on the bottom and the, the housing cost, the median price or the price of housing is up, is along the left axis. So it's the median price. So it's important to, to mention that fifty percent of the homes available for sale in the market in any individual year are above this line and fifty percent are below this one. This is the median. For reference, the median home price in nineteen ninety was one hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
At the beginning of two thousand and twenty was four seventy-seven. And now I have to caveat that I, I am not discounting the fact that twenty twenty saw massive price appreciation. And, um, a- and, and I recognize that, but that wasn't the, the, the scope of what we're looking at here. That will be for some, a, a future discussion on, on what's happening, you know, this year. We want to look at how affordable was it over time? So, you know, this is, this is a nice graph, but, uh, I showed this to people and say, well, what is this? What is this giant spike in the middle? That's the two thousand and four, two thousand and eight subprime lending housing bubble.
Mm-hmm.
As we look at this, just know that that's why that weird out-of-place spike is there. So this is something more akin to the trend line, if you kind of flattened out, took out all the craziness. So this is where the, the, this chart really becomes interesting. So I've added this line here. This is a, it's lavender purple, depending on how your screen, um, produces the color, but this line is the max affordable mortgage in any given year to a household earning one hundred and twenty percent of area median income. And that's, that's a specific number, a, a specific income category, because that is typically what is targeted for, um, a, a for-sale subsidized uh, affordable housing project, where we'd be looking for people to actually buy and own the home, would be in the one hundred and twenty percent area median income category. Important thing about this line, if the line is above the median income, obviously, that household could avo- afford more than the median income. It's touching it. They can afford exactly the median income. And if it's below it, they can afford less than the median income. But on the line being just below the median income, the closer that line comes to the median income, even if it's below, there are still homes available for sale in those income, in, at that income strata. It's just, you want to be as close as possible to that median income. We're not, this is a ballpark kind of analysis. We're not, we're not drilling all the way down to the individual um, house costs for every house for sale, um, over this, this time period. So just, just a note as we continue to look forward here. Um, again, another note, the hundred and twenty percent area, area median income in nineteen ninety was forty thousand. In nine, in two thousand and twenty, it was ninety thousand. As per a family four. So what do we see? So we see from nineteen ninety to two thousand and four, the line is basically the, the income or the, the, the hundred and twenty percent area median income could afford the median price to. The line is above the median income line. So it's affordable to a hundred and twenty percent area median income home, household. We see the same thing from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty, meaning that the private market without any government subsidy, in the history of Temecula, was producing twenty-seven of thirty years producing on its own housing affordable to those making a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, which is uh, it's pretty incredible. So that's great, one hundred and twenty percent area median income. W- we wanted to look at, what about median income households and eighty percent of area median income households? Which area, eighty percent of area median income is technically considered low income. So we did the same, we plotted the same data. And, uh, again, I, it's important to know that the median area income in nineteen ninety was thirty-three thousand and the eighty percent AMI in nineteen ninety was twenty-seven thousand.
Wow.
And in twenty twenty, the median income was seventy-five. This is a for a family four. And the eighty percent AMI was sixty thousand for a family four.
So that's about what I thought.
Yeah, but you're, you're, you're pretty close. And what we see is, it's not nearly as affordable as it was for the hundred and twenty, but we do see periods, large periods, where the, the, a family or a household earning the median income or eighty percent of the area median income could actually afford homes in Temecula that were privately produced, non-subsidized. We see it through nineteen ninety-four to about nine, two thousand and three. And then we see in two thousand and nine to two thousand and thirteen that even eighty, eighty percent of area median income could more than afford the median income home. Pretty incredible. So I think, so fifteen or thirty years, homes are affordable to both the median eighty percent AMI. You know, ru- there, there are some years where the eighty percent AMIs drop below, but i- in terms of the, um, median, it's, it's pretty solid. Um, so I, I think the, the moral of the story here is that three of, the vast majority of the history of housing production, private housing production in the city of Temecula, has been affordable. has been affordable to many different income strata, not just upper income, all the way down to what is technically considered low income. So, uh, just as a summary of this, of this section, uh, again, Temecula's produced large amounts of housing units just, um, just as the state entered a deficit of production. And Temecula market rate housing has provided relatively affordable options for multiple incomes for many, many years. So I'll go ahead and throw it back to you, Madam Mayor, for discussion questions.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Randy just handed me a note, so I need a motion to extend. And let's just go ahead and go to eleven o'clock. It's, it's, uh, eight minutes till ten.
I'll move to extend to eleven PM.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, and all in favor, aye.
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 Okay. Um, any questions on this?
I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't think you can see me yet. Um, I, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. When we talk about, um, you know, our market rate production and, and I think there's a lot that goes into, um, a lot of the subdivisions that we have in our city that really sort of highlight, um, the importance of, um, mixed incomes in the same community. So I live in Harveston, and I think when everyone hears that, they think of this, um, idyllic, um, you know, picket fences and everyone's living on sprawling estates and whatnot. But if you actually look at Harveston, there's, there's apartments in Harveston, uh, for rent. There's, um, there's zero lot line homes in Harveston. Uh, the lake homes are small lots, our lot is twenty-five hundred square foot lot, um, which is just.
That's the lot, not the house. That's the lot.
The lot is a very small lot, so this dense development. Um, there's, there's larger lot homes, um, there's condominiums. Um, and I think when you look at that, when we, when we talk about, um, you know, s- some of the, the successes that we had, I, I don't want to minimize any of the developments we have in our city, but there are some developments that, um, Summers Bend will be the same way, right? There are some developments that, um, add this mix of incomes, which, um, it just inherently makes a, a stronger community, a more resilient community. Um, so I just, that's market rate stuff. That's, that's, that's just market rate housing production that is doing good things, right? And we didn't have to tell, you know, we didn't have to say, oh, this is what you need to do. This is a good thing to do. I, I, so no question, just really wanted to highlight that specifically.
Well, it gives a potential to sell more homes too. I mean, the, you know, the, the, the more diversity you have in the price ranges, the more people you're going to attract that can afford each of the different levels, so.
Yeah, it gives someone a starter home and, and they can get in, definitely.
Or now, remember, it's the senior citizens too.
Well, there's senior facilities over there, so you can come and be my neighbor.
Yeah, who are going to downsize and, and, you know, want a nice home, but it's just smaller.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Matt, I'd be interested in what you think of the, of the charts, the, and the, the data. You're Mr. Chart Man.
Oh, man, I've got so much to say. I'm going to hold back my, uh, shots for, for later, um, and, and share all my thoughts at once.
Okay. Luke, are you drinking Dr. Pepper or anything? I mean.
I've got my coffee, good to go.
Need a little, okay, then, let's go.
Good. Two more sections. So that was market rate affordable housing production. This is a, a shorter section, but it is about, uh, uh, the affordable, the Temecula's history of affordable housing production. This is, uh, you know, subsidized, um, rental and for sale. So again, um, what is affordable housing? It's, uh, I've gone through this. It's housing that utilizes a government subsidy of some type to finance the development of a residential property. It's rent and/or sales price restricted usually for fifty-five years. So we wanted to take a look at, you know, how did, how did the city of Temecula stack up against, um, our peers in Southwest Riverside in terms of affordable housing production or units that are available to the community? And we can see here that Temecula has produced the most of all the, of the local cities, um, with the closest, uh, being Lake Elsinore at five hundred and eleven. So the city of Temecula is at eight hundred and four as of today. Um, this is kind of an interesting chart. And it, it's a ratio of deed restricted affordable housing units to population. So the key here is the shorter the bar, the better. And we see that Temecula has one affordable housing unit for every one hundred and forty-three residents. And if we compare that to our, the, our, our sister cities who are closest in population, city of Marietta has one affordable housing unit for every four hundred and seventy-two residents and Menifee has one for every four hundred and thirty. So, um, you know, maybe, maybe fourfold better than our, our peers on that metric. Um, so I talked about the reduction or elimination of RDA funding earlier, but what did the RDA do, the city's RDA redevelopment agency do with the money it had when it had a funding source? So I'm going to go through a little bit of the construction of affordable housing that's been done and a couple of other programs that I think, uh, are, are pertinent to discussion tonight. So this is the cottages of Old Town. I'm not going to go through all of them. There's too many to go through. I, I just, I just picked a, a cross-section. Um, cottages of Old Town, this is, uh, built in two thousand and three. There's seventeen units. They're for sale, owner occupied, and available to moderate income buyers, which is a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. Um, and some of the buyers of these homes use the, the RDA's, uh, first-time home buyer program. And the RDA invested one point five million dollars in these seventeen units. Now, here's an, here's one, a, a, a different unit, but cottages of Old Town. Habitat for Humanity One, built in two thousand and three, uh, two units for sale. Of course, that's the Habitat for Humanity model, uh, available to low-income eighty percent AMI folks. The, the RDA had a, had a, a modest investment of eighty thousand dollars in these two units. Habitat for Humanity Two, which is kind of around the corner, it's five units. This is one of the units, uh, for sale to low-income eighty percent, uh, uh, AMI buyers. The RDA invested five hundred and two thousand in this project. Um, the, the Dalton Two project, which is in Old Town, this is a rental project, twenty-four units of low income, uh, eighty percent AMI, um, above, uh, you know, restaurants and salons, a mixed-use project. RDA invested three million in that project. Right next door is the Polymer Heritage, which is a, a added twenty-two, um, eighty percent AMI rental units. And the RDA invested three point three million in that project. This is the Portola Terrace project, um, over on Punal, forty-four rental units, uh, low and very low, um, which is eighty percent, fifty percent of AMI, so a deeper affordability. And the redevelopment agency invested five point five million dollars in that project. So this is a before picture, and many of you are familiar with this project. It was formerly called Summer House. It's over off Margarita's across from Stadium Pizza. It was a property that fell into foreclosure, um, during the housing crisis. This is the, the, this was the condition of the property. Um, it was formerly, like I said, formerly called Summer House. The city stepped up, redevelopment agency with Bridge Housing bought the property. As you can see, it was half-built. Um, bought it for, to turn it into, you know, an affordable housing development. This is what it looked like after the renovation was complete. The Summer House name has been replaced with Madera Vista, but it's a hundred and ten rental units available to low and very low-income households, twenty units set aside for seniors. And the RDA investment was significant at eight point four million dollars.
And that started out as about five hundred thousand dollar condominiums.
Yes, these were intentioned to be over five hundred thousand dollar condominiums, uh, for seniors, actually.
Mm-hmm.
But it obviously, um, didn't work out that way. So this is, this is another picture, and this is the, the very, it's a very nice project. Uh, this is a senior project that the city did. It's, uh, sixty-five units, uh, for, for low and very low-income seniors. And the RDA invested two point six million in that project. So that's just a cross-section of the projects that we've done. Um, again, there's over eight hundred units, um, to the city's credit in affordable housing throughout the city. But the RDA did other programs too, uh, like the first-time home buyer program. I went through, you know, the charts about, you know, homes were available and affordable to, you know, moderate income buyers. They, they may have been able to make the monthly mortgage, but what about the down payment? So the, the agency had a program while we had a funding source, provided up to fifty thousand dollars in down payment assistance, uh, to first-time home buyers for the folks buying in Temecula. We, the RDA, uh, spent over half a million dollars on that program. And, and finally, one of the, uh, very successful programs was the Residential Improvement Program, which is available to, uh, moderate and low-income homeowners in the city, uh, up to ten thousand dollars for a forgivable loan, um, to renovate the, the, mostly the outside of the house, but if there were systems inside that need to be renovated for health and safety issues, um, for that too. The RDA spent about two point four million dollars on that program and rehabilitated four hundred and eighty-eight homes within the city. So very successful.
It's blight too.
Exactly, exactly. Um, and we have, we have, uh, projects that are funded and in the works that the city has allocated money to. Uh, away, Las Haciendas, which was mentioned earlier by, uh, Commissioner Watts, um, is in Uptown, uh, Temecula. It's, it's been funded by the city, um, and we're hoping that construction can start soon. It's seventy-seven rental units for low and very, uh, low-income households. And the RDA is a significant investment in this project of ten point two million dollars. Um, Fine Creek, sixty units, low and very low. Fourteen of these units are set aside for, uh, households with, um, uh, family members with special needs. And the agency has invested or will invest two point seven million in this project. And that's a huge project. And then, uh, finally Habitat for Humanity Free, which, as you can see, that red arrow pointing to the vacant lot. Habitat for Humanity Two, um, what is, uh, a project we're working on with Tammy Marine and her group at Habitat, for another six-unit for-sale product available to moderate and low-income home buyers. And the agency's, uh, well, it's, it's the former agency's investment in that project is around seven hundred thousand. And that's a, uh, is, is intended to be a joint effort, a joint venture with the county of Riverside. So just in summary, the agency has, you know, over eight hundred units either built or, or in the pipeline uh, for multiple, uh, income categories. And there was a question in one of the comments, uh, public comments about how much the agency has invested in affordable housing. Currently, the agency has already invested forty-three point three million. And we have, the, the city and the former agency has allocated, um, contractually, another thirteen point seven in available funds for the projects I just mentioned. So that concludes this section, Madam Mayor. I'll turn it over for discussion.
Well, that's great. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, go ahead, Stu.
So Luke, can, since the city is the one who, well, the former RDA, can we, um, restrict those, uh, low and, uh, those low-income apartments to Temecula residents and/or people who have Temecula jobs? I mean, do we have that ability at all, or can anybody grab it?
Yep.
Well, uh, the, the answer, the answer is no. I mean, generally speaking, um, the, the only way to discriminate in favor of someone in, in housing is if they are a, a protected class. Well, you know, um, a, a senior, a vet, someone with a disability. Something, there's a whole, there's a whole section of law on this, and I'm not an attorney, so I'm, I'm not going to get into that, because I, I will certainly say something wrong. But generally speaking, you have to be in one of these legally protected classes in order for housing discrimination in your favor, right? So we cannot, we cannot, um, um, make a requirement that you live in the city or that you have a job in the city. Those are not protected classes.
And they've expanded the protected classes in the last couple of years too. Anybody else? Oh, Jess, that one.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Luke. One other thing, when people come up to me, um, they're going to, they've been asking me, you know, what would we lose as a city if we didn't follow along with state regulations? Can you just let people know what that looks like if we don't, as a city, follow along with that?
Good question. Very good question.
Yeah, um, in the past, it was a murky area to answer that question. I think the, the ultimate, in the past, the ultimate punishment would be that the city would lose its ability to issue billing permits, which kind of is counterintuitive, right? That, that kind of works against their, their whole goal of getting cities to issue permits. So that was never really used, but under the new legislation that has been, you know, adopted, that I've gone over, I didn't go over any of these bills, um, but there is a whole new kind of carrot and sticks state regime when it comes to, um, enforcing on cities rules. So the, the, the theory for the state is, is that they have these programs to help cities reach the targets, whether it be planning grants, whether it be affordable housing grants, uh, things like that. But on the other side of the coin is they've actually, uh, developed a financial penalty, um, uh, kind of regime that, and I don't recall exactly how much, how much each penalty is. It's something like ten thousand dollars a penalty, but can go way up to six hundred thousand dollars. So they, they've actually created a, 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 a fine system. And what we see, what we saw in Huntington Beach, the state can just directly sue you and force you to, to do what they, you know, what they have, um, dictated at the legislature. And we, we saw that with Huntington Beach, and I believe, and as Peter, um, you can correct me, I believe Huntington Beach lost that lawsuit, so the state prevailed in that lawsuit. And this, and Huntington Beach was essentially doing exactly that. They were saying, we're not going to do this. We're, we're not going to, we're not going to abide by the, the arena numbers and we're going to go our own way. Well, the state didn't, they didn't like that and sued them, and, and the state won.
And so the fine system was just basically, so I, I have an understanding as well. So the fine system is, okay, we're not going to comply, uh, with the amount of housing that you want us to put in, and then that's when they tack on those fines. Is that correct?
Yeah, if you're not meeting your targets, if you haven't adopted a housing element in time, if you haven't, um, if, even if you haven't adopted housing element, if you're not meeting the goals in the housing element by the prescribed time, they're monitoring all this, you know, in real time over, o- over years, and they're coming to the city and saying, you haven't, you, you said you were going to do this, you didn't do it. Okay, we'll help you do it, but if, even if with the help you don't do it, well, we can, we, we, we do have the ability to find you.
Wow.
So, yeah, that's, that's kind of the new, the new system. I, I haven't seen it done yet, obviously. It's, it's new. I haven't seen anybody get fined, but, um, it's there if they need it.
We don't want to be the first either.
No.
Thanks, Luke.
You good? Anybody else? Zach.
I'll just, you know, continue to jump in and really sort of expand on what Councilmember Stewart brought up is, you know, we're hearing from the community, right? And, um, sort of saying no at this point and defying the state. I, I don't know, that would be almost defying the residents as well. But when we talk about building affordable housing, and we, we certainly want Temecula residents to be able to live there, right? A, a whole other component of this is again, and I, I don't want to throw any other cities under the bus, but the reality of not all cities are building affordable housing at the rate they should. So, well, we might want to build something and, and for our local workforce, the reality is, is that someone could, um, be working in Corona and live in Temecula, right? Because, well, we've created this, this wonderful community down here, and you look at Madera Vista and you're like, well, that's amazing. I'm going to go live there, right? And, but you're not even working here anymore. So, you know, it's really this, and I, and I've tried to have these conversations with some folks in the community. This is not a Temecula-specific problem. It's not even a California problem. It's a, it's, it's a national problem at this point, and it, and it takes these larger solutions. Um, we can't just one-off create, um, you know, massive amounts of units and think we're going to solve all those problems for residents. People will continue to come here from all over, and I just really want to highlight that because it is this reality of like, well, we want to all be in this together, which is why we're part of SCAG. But not everybody's sort of playing on that, that same, uh, playing field. Uh, I, again, just try to acknowledge the realities of a regional plan. Um, everyone needs to be doing their part.
But unlike years past, there is, there is, there are consequences now. You know, there just didn't used to really be consequences, but there are consequences now. So that'll be some protection for us, but yet you can't restrict. Um, you know, you can't pick and choose who moves in other than they have to qualify, you know, under the affordable piece. And again, we've said for a lot of years, we're victims of our own success. And we provide beautiful homes in a beautiful community and beautiful affordable housing too. And, um, that people want to come here, and we can't, we can't pick and choose who comes. They just have to, you have to qualify. Are we good? Luke, is this the grand finale?
This is the grand finale.
All right.
So this, the, a final section, um, is, uh, addressing, uh, the concerns that Laurel Lamont and her group have put forward. Um, there's, there's three subsections here, and, uh, one, the first one is, is, uh, concerns about the warehouse at Creekside, which is a, uh, affordable housing development town. Um, the request for inclusionary housing ordinance, so that discussion. And then the workforce housing proposal that, um, was put forward. So, um, just, just a caveat here, this is that, um, I'm going to do my best to, uh, translate what I think Laurel was trying to say with the workforce housing. Laurel was trying to say with the workforce housing proposal, and and I know Laurel's probably watching, so forgive me if I don't. Translate it exactly as you have envisioned it, but we can certainly work on that in the future if I do get any of it. Slightly wrong, but I was trying to work off of her. Her, her sheet that she gave us with all of the the individual details. So just wanted to say that upfront. So we're gonna start with the issues raised by the warehouse tenants. And just so everybody knows what the warehouse at Creekside is, it's located in Old Town on Third Street. It's an affordable housing development. There's thirty two. Restricted income units in the property. The RDA did invest about ten years ago or so, six million dollars in the project. The city does not own or operate this project. They're all privately owned. And the the terms of the RDA's investment and the city's involvement are really defined primarily by the regulatory agreement. Which mostly says, it says a lot, but the, one of the main. Parameters is who who can, who can qualify and how much they can be charged for it. So that's, that's the main, the main thrust of the regulatory agreement. So I have to ask you to bear with me, I'm gonna go through these point by point, so it's, it's gonna bog down a little bit. But I think it's important that we, we just hit them all, so I I'm, I'm, I don't wanna be accused of missing something. So the first issue that was raised is, quote, the warehouse at Creekside tenants that appear to have had their rent raised. Beyond the legal amount during a pandemic and without authorization from the city. So the bullet points are kind of the the staff's response. So first, the regulatory agreement, which I mentioned, requires that prior to any rental increase, the landlord must request approval from the city sixty day prior. To in the increases taking effect. So most of the rental rate increases requests were made timely. For for those that were not, the city denied the landlord's rental rate increase for this compliance reporting year. The rental increases requested remain within the rental range as defined. The remaining rental increases remain within the rental range as defined by the regulatory agreement. This has been an interesting year because Governor Newsom issued an executive order prohibiting rental increases of more than ten percent. So we had to analyze it based on that criteria as well. And from what we saw, the landlord rental increases did not exceed this limit. And finally, because the rental rate increases were within the limits established in the regulatory agreement and did not violate the governor's orders. The city had no basis to deny the rental race increase request. The second issue raised is, quote, warehouse at Creekside tenants have not received full reimbursement of their illegal parking fees. So the tenants rightfully brought to the city's attention that they would be charged parking fees. The city's interpretation of the regulatory agreement is that parking fees are not a permitted fee to be charged. So once finding this out, the city immediately corresponded with the landlord and demanded full refund of all parking fees charged to tenants. Is our understanding is that those refunds are in process but have not been completed. And finally, the city is going to stay engaged on this issue until all the parking fees are fully refunded. So we will stay engaged with the landlord and make sure that all of those, those fees are returned in full. Next issue is, quote, warehouse at Creekside exploitative practices of charging tenants rent. For two apartments to move their family from one bedroom to a two bedroom. So city staff's understanding of this issue is that tenants may want to move apartments. But are required by the landlord to wait until the end of their current lease term before they're able to switch apartments, signing a new lease when they move. Staff's understanding is that this issue is, the the issue is that if the lease term is not over. And the tenant still wants to rent the other apartment, then the landlord requires them to sign an additional leave to reserve the apartment. I, I, city staff's position is that the landlord is within his rights to enforce the terms of valid lease agreements. So long as those lease agreements are compliant with the regulatory agreement. I'm not sure how, how. A tenant in a rent restricted apartment could qualify for two leases, to pay two leases at the same time. So that is still a mystery to me and something that we should, with that we, that I still need to get to the bottom of. Next issue is, quote, warehouse at Creekside, lack of functional essential laundry facilities. Short answer to this question is neither the city's conditions of approval for the project nor the regulatory agreement require the landlord to provide laundry services on site. That being said, and regardless, the city highly encourages the landlord, and we have, we have communicated this to them. To maintain any and all laundry facilities that are located on site. And we agree with the tenants that if laundry facilities and machines are provided, they should be kept in good working order. The problem for us as staff in the city is we have no regulatory requirement for those services to be provided. Next issue is the warehouse at Creekside capitalizing on new tenants to increase profit. I wasn't sure how to answer this, but I'll just be direct. So long as the landlord is administering the property in accordance with the regulatory agreement, then the landlord is within his rights to take on new tenants at landlord's discretion. And I believe this is the final issue raised in a term in regard, in regards to the warehouse, which is, it kinda crosses over. Quote, the critical need for an inclusionary housing ordinance, especially as it relates to AB six seventy one. So I'm familiar with AB six seventy one. I'm not sure how it relates to inclusionary housing. AB six seventy one mandates that local agencies include a plan that incentivizes and promotes the creation of accessory dwelling units. Or ADUs that can be offered at affordable rent for low, you know, for for affordable income households. And place those incentives in the housing element. So on that issue, the city has, as we already mentioned, the city's already. Already permits ADUs in all residential zones by right. That's a state law. And in terms of directly addressing AB six seventy one, the city is developing standard architectural and building plans. That residents will be able to use to reduce the time and cost of constructing an ADU. So in terms of AB six seventy one, it's related to ADUs. And I believe the city is addressing the intent of of AB six seventy one. But on the issue of a, of an inclusionary housing ordinance. What is it? It's a law that typically requires all new residential development to set aside a certain percentage of the new units constructed. To be restricted for rental or sale only to the lower, to 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 one hundred and twenty percent area median income or below. And some inclusionary ordinances give the developer the option to pay a fee in lieu of setting aside actual units. So what are some of the pros and cons? And the, this is not staff's position on an inclusionary ordinance. These are just some, some food for thought if the council would like to discuss this when I'm finished. So some of the pros are, or the main pro, which is in theory that, you know, so long as the market rate, housing market is financially healthy. More residential development will be reduced and along with it will come more restricted affordable housing. That's the the primary goal. Some of the cons that we've seen or read about is that the the potential to raise the cost of market rate housing. As. The, 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 the inclusion of affordable housing in a, in a market rate development. Typically, not always, I can't say it always, but typically, those are a, a, a financial loser for the developer. So they must be subsidized by the market rate unit. So they have to raise the rent or the housing price for a market rate unit. And the problem there is that. That typically hurts the entry level rental or sale buyer more than it does at any, anyone else. Because the higher you go up the income strata, you know, a fourteen thousand dollar fee for. To, to pay the in lieu fee for, for the inclusionary housing ordinance for someone buying a million dollar home. Well, they're gonna pay their broker four times that much money just to to buy and sell the house. They'll just put that into the loan. But if you're, if you're, if you're five thousand dollars within being able to buy the home or or not. That's where it can actually become a problem for the entry level buyers. So there's, there's some, there's some issues to be discussed there. Strangely enough. We don't see it as being necessarily a favored strategy by the state of California for inclusion in the city's housing element. We've heard this from our consultant who's working with other cities who have been talking about including inclusionary housing ordinances. And another kind of way to look at this is, we've seen a flood of housing legislation, everything under the sun. We have not seen a piece of legislation requiring an inclusionary housing ordinance. So I think that's kind of telling to the state's. Kind of stance on them. Now, they're not prohibited, of course, but they are restricted by a new law, AB fifteen oh five. Which I think is kind of like a passive aggressive way of keeping cities from doing it. Because if you are, if you pass a, an inclusionary housing ordinance that will require more than fifteen percent of any development. Be set aside as affordable, you have to produce a economic impact report. That shows that that won't, that the inclusion of those units will not raise the cost of housing in your community. You have to submit it to HCD and they have to, they get to approve or deny that, that, that study. So to me, that's a way of the state saying, we don't favor these, you can still do them, but you better prove to us it's not gonna raise housing costs. So that's, that's just interesting insight that we've kind of learned over the last few months. Interestingly, the city has. A inclusionary ordinance already. It doesn't cover the entire city. It's, it, it's called the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone. It was a requirement of the, of the housing element cycle we're in now. We call it the HOZ, and it is an inclusionary ordinance over a portion of the city. That requires any new residential development that comes in and develops under this ordinance to require, it requires twenty percent affordable. For twenty percent affordable units from, from the, from the entire lotment. It has to be affordable to eighty percent AMI or lower. And we have two projects that have already been approved. They haven't been constructed, but they, the city has approved them under the HOZ. Which total one hundred and twenty nine affordable housing units. So that's kind of an interesting note as well. So this is the final subsection. This is Ms. Lamont's workforce housing proposal. And again, I'm just gonna go through it point by point. So the objective that she put forward is, quote, to create a supply of housing in Temecula and Marietta. That the local workforce can afford to purchase. With the result that working families may live in or near the communities where they work and more fully participate in the life of those communities. How could you argue with that? That sounds great. We should work towards that. Ms. Lamont goes on to list categories of potential applicants, and I know this question has already been asked. But potential applicants under her proposal for this project include working single parents with little or no child support. Workers who are also full or part time students, young adults in their first job. Couples who both work at entry level or service sector jobs and have young children. Temecula residents or someone who has a job located in Temecula. And finally, families that have very high fixed expenses or debt due to an unavoidable circumstance such as a prolonged illness, disability. Or special needs child. Again, as I, as I mentioned before, these are all well deserving categories. The, the problem in the law is that almost all of them are not considered a protected class. And we wouldn't be able to create a program that discriminates in their favor, with the exception. Of a household with someone with a disability or special needs children. So that, that would be something that would be an appropriate legal category for an applicant. And a, and a program to be built around. So the red, the, as we go through this, the red is, is, is my kind of thoughts or response to, to the proposal. So qualification of the applicants. So Ms. Lamont has proposed that the applicant must have a job in the jurisdiction where he, she applies for housing or, or in the adjacent jurisdiction. This is not a qualific, again, this is not a qualification factor that can be used to discriminate against applicants that don't meet this requirement. But would otherwise qualify based on income. This is the protected class issue again. The second bullet is the applicant and his or her immediate family must occupy the house and must agree not to rent it or any portion of it to anyone else. That's entirely allowed. That's a primary residence requirement. That's standard. The third bullet, the applicant may not own in whole or in part any other residence anywhere. This is actually fairly tricky to achieve. So it's not clear as to whether this requirement is enforceable legally. It may be. I'd have to talk to an attorney about that. But more pertinent, I believe, is. More pertinent would be, does the ownership of another property affect the applicant's income eligibility? So I think that if, if we're gonna discuss that, we would, we would need to discuss it from that angle. So the terms of the subsidy. The proposal is that the entity managing the subsidized housing would be either a qualified, not-for-profit organization, a governmental agency. Or resident governed common interest development group. So my initial reaction to that is that if the units are to be owner occupied, right? So the, the people who live there own the units, there would be no government entity, you know, quote, managing the housing. Those, those would be those people's privately owned homes. The units would be owned outright, like, so just like I said, the owners would be owned outright by the occupants. Now, an HOA could, you know, the, 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 the group of private homeowners could get together and establish an HOA. But that HOA would have, would only, would be limited to similar authorities that a typical HOA would have. But continuing on with the terms of the subsidy, subsidy, the value of the subsidized residence would not fluctuate with the market, but would be fixed during the period of ownership. This would ensure that the beneficiary of the subsidy would not profit from housing market appreciation, only from the opportunity to build equity. So typically in a for sale affordable development, the initial buyer qualifies as, say, for example, a moderate income buyer. When they go to sell the house, they must sell the house to another moderate income buyer. They can't sell it into the, into the private market. They have to find a buyer that qualifies. And because area median income goes up slowly over time, the next buyer will qualify at a slightly higher income. And a slightly higher mortgage, meaning that the home can be sold at a slightly higher price than originally purchased. And the difference is what is captured is equity by the current owner. So it's, it, you, you build equity, but you don't build equity, you know, like a private homeowner would. Cause you have to find a affordable buyer to to sell to, and that's, that's a challenge. Continuing on with the terms of the subsidy, any mortgage loan held by an owner would be structured. So that the down payment and monthly payments would be based on the applicant's actual ability to pay. The subsidy program would establish mortgage cost ceilings such as a maximum of five percent down. And monthly payments not to exceed forty percent of income after payroll and family medical insurance deductions. Okay, unlikely, in my opinion, unlikely a private lender would agree to these terms. So any loan would most likely need to be fully funded, held on the balance sheet. And administered by the city or other government entity. So that's just, and then the payments not to exceed forty percent of income. The, the federal maximum, the state maximum is actually thirty five percent, so that could actually come down, which is a good thing. And then my only question here would be, you know, it's, it's based, the proposal is that. The repayment of a mortgage is based on the ability to pay. And my question is, will, would be what happens if the resident just decides they don't wanna work anymore? How does that work? So that's just a question that I have. So that's the proposal as I, you know, pull it point for point off of, of, of what was turned in. And my initial reaction obviously is, I agree with the idea that housing needs to be more affordable for the workforce than many others. You know, just me personally, I dedicated fifteen years of my career to, to building affordable housing, so I completely agree with that. And, you know, as I mentioned before, the defining characteristic of Temecula housing's produ, production story is the production of. Of, of, of affordable housing that has been affordable to the workforce. Now, that has obviously changed in recent years, especially over the last year, and I wanna make sure that that's well documented and recognized. So I'll just leave it at that. And then, so some of the challenges in implementing the proposal. The state legislated strategy of targeting the deepest affordability units possible, i.e. the lowest income ranges, everything below eighty percent AMI. Is, is a hindrance because usually you have to have, you know, if you're gonna look for a, a for sale product that's in the one hundred and twenty percent AMI range. Again, the SB three forty one that restricted the, the city's ability to fund anything over eighty percent AMI, that's a huge challenge. And then, of course, I already mentioned that. Homeownership product of this sort is typically targeted at one hundred and twenty percent AMI, which the city cannot fund with its RDA money. And finally, this would, so what, what does this mean? This means that the city would, would need to most likely find another funding source for a project like this. You know, potentially general fund dollars to be able to do something like this. We wouldn't be able to do with redevelopment dollars, most likely. What's the immediate good news? I wanted to end on some good news. And that is, the city is working with Habitat for Humanity, I already mentioned this, to complete Habitat Three. Which is six units of for sale, owner occupied, targeted at moderate and. Which is six units of for-sale, owner occupied, targeted at moderate and some low income household. Now, that's exactly what I believe, uh, many of the commenters were looking for is a subsidized for-sale product. I know it's only six units, but, um, you know, we have to, we have to do what we can. And right now, this is what we can do. The city can do this and, and we are working hard to make that happen.
And who's to say who, you know, we don't say who is going to be in those six units other than the people, they have to be people who. Um, you know, qualify.
That's right. They'd have to qualify.
Yeah, your chances is good as somebody else's if you qualify.
That's right. So that's, that's, that's the best I could do to present, um, someone else's proposal. I, I hope I did an okay job. I hope it did. I, I did a justified job for Ms. Lamont, and I'm sure, um, we'll be talking later if I didn't. Um, but I wanted to turn it over to the council, uh, for discussion and questions. That is the last. Um, section, I do have a, a slight conclusion that I would like to do. So Madam Mayor, you want me to just go ahead and. Wrap it up and then turn it over to you, or do you want me to wait?
Council members, I do. I think you should go ahead.
Okay. So just a conclusion, we, we covered a lot of topics. Don't need to go back over that. So where are we going from here? And I mentioned this in the beginning. This is the beginning of the conversation, not the end. This is the, this is, this is, we're, we're on a journey now for a new housing element. Um, it, I thought it was very important to cover some of the history of housing in Temecula. So we can know where we've been to know where we're going. Um, and it's good timing. We have the housing element. We're doing the quality of life master plan.
Yeah.
We're doing public outreach galore. Um, so there's going to be a lot of, of interaction between staff and the community. And the council and the commissions and everyone under the sun in our community. Uh, over the next, you know, really the next few months, the next six months. Um, so I just wanted to make point of that. And this, this presentation really wasn't about future production. But I wanted to mention that there are many projects on the books that are going to produce huge numbers of units. In the locations, Councilwoman Alexander, that we talked about. In Alter, in Uptown, in the, um, uh, the Summers Band area. And there is the potential in the discussion for mixed use redevelopment potentially of, of certain shopping centers. So I just wanted to make the point that, um, while we talked about housing history today mostly. Um, there's a lot on the horizon. There's a lot of units that are going to be produced and. Of course, increasing supply in, in, in some sense should bring down the cost of housing. So that's it. Uh, I'm available for any questions.
You did a great job, Luke. I mean, really, that answered so many questions and. Uh, I know for all of us, and, and we learned things that we probably didn't know before. So. Um, I hope it was as helpful for Mrs. Lamont and, um, some of her neighbors. So, um, any questions or comments? Zach.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just, um, I'll make a brief comment and, uh, give, uh, my council colleagues the floor for a little while. Um, Luke, I, I've dominated maybe a little bit, so.
Oh, you're fine.
Luke, I just want to say thank you again. I, I mean, I think it's important to, to acknowledge the, the time and effort put into that. Um, something I'd like to see, and, and if I can, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to see this online. Um, I think it needs to be accessible. I don't think, um, you know, uh, sitting through this, um. You know, you, watching this video, um, afterwards, um, it's, it's a long video, right? We want to give people an opportunity to, um, to see this information, to see this story and to, to understand everything that's. That has happened, that will happen, and that's going on currently. So if we can put that on our affordable housing, uh, website, I would certainly appreciate that. So, thank you.
I think that's a great idea. Anybody else? Stu?
Well, um, that was, the questions I was asking was really kind of. Um, I think where a lot of people were coming from that, uh. That the city needs to step up and make affordable housing for people who work and live in Temecula. And I, I think the answer is we can't do that for legal reasons. Um, and I do just want to encourage people who are, who are looking at the prices of homes today. And going, we're never going to be able to buy a house. Well, anybody who's lived in California long enough. Steep this. So, so stick around, you know, i- if, if it's getting. Uh, apartments are getting affordable, you know, hang in there because. You know, the market does drop when it peaks. So, um, I, you know, and just like Luke was saying, the affordability factor. It does exist in Temecula probably more so than any other place. And you know, there's, uh, the affordability factor, Menefee has gone up dramatically too. So. So that's, um, you know, I, I don't get discouraged, you know, when you see these spikes. Because these spikes do take a downward trend most of the time. So. That's my dissent.
I, I think that gas, I think that, uh, housing prices and, and gasoline, uh, va- prices, um, are somehow tied together. They seem, you know, they rise and fall at the same time. So anybody else? Matt? Yeah, I want to, I want to get your, you've been so quiet. I want to hear about your, you know, that, your data interpretation. And I know Luke was, did an amazing job on, on information.
That was, uh, that was incredible. I, I, uh, I'm going to have, I'm going to have to bring you into lecture on some of my classes.
Uh-oh.
No.
Wasn't an academic exercise.
Right? Uh, so, so look, let me, let me, uh, I, I have. Three pages of notes that I put together, uh, actually six. My lights just went off. Actually.
Twenty minutes and then we have to extend again.
Oh, I'm going to hit the highlights reel instead. And the good news is, is I serve on the Affordable Housing. Subcommittee. I'm not characterizing that properly, but, but, um. You know, Luke, I can always bring this forward and, and, you know, a, a detailed email later. Um, but, but I wanted to, uh, say a few things because I think, look, first of all, the housing crisis is real, right? But the way I see it, everybody points fingers at, at other folks and nobody takes responsibility. The, the state's response in my mind is, is that they, they've, you know, ever since I've moved to California, you know, over twenty years ago now. Um, the state has been ringing the bell on the housing crisis, screaming at the cities to respond to this emergency. But all at the same time, passing some fairly ill-conceived legislation. Throws gasoline on an already out of control fire. And I, I look at this and I'm like, how is passing more confusing laws and conflicting, you know, how is this helping at all, right? It seems like some of this stuff should be a lot more simple, but we're not moving in that direction. We just complicate it more. Uh, the history report you gave Luke was, was incredibly valuable. Uh, and, and, and very necessary, I think. And I appreciate everybody's patience, if you are still watching, you know, for sticking through to this point. Um, especially when we consider that, you know, the points that were made, Temecula only became a city at the inflection point of where the apparent housing crisis began.
Right.
And our story is remarkably different than other cities, right? Um, and that was demonstrated by some of the numbers. And so this was important and it highlighted our story and it showed our challenges. Uh, but it also helps, uh, identify where our critical issues are. So really Bravo, Luke, on you and, and everybody else I know. That put in a lot of time putting this together. To be certain, housing prices and, and Stu, you said it, it's, it's not just about location, right? And, and yeah, prices go up and down, but we also have to remember that. California in essence has sort of priced its own self out of the market, right? The cost of construction, permitting, environmental review. All of that, you know, and, and you even heard today, the burden of fees outside of the city's own control and MSHCP fees and other things. It will price projects into failure, right? And so why are houses so expensive? Everybody thinks, oh, well, it's because, you know, the sun sets and, and rises on California shores. No, it's because it is just really difficult and over-regulated to get things done here and extremely expensive. So you start piling on burdens and then you have regulatory agencies in the middle of a housing crisis. You know, throwing on additional burdens and things and it, it, you know, makes it impossible. You know, and I think that became really clear to me when several years ago, we put out, uh, the, um, RFP. And I know, I think it was Mike and I that sat on that subcommittee at the time to review all of the projects. And, and, you know, the city at the time, we put out a RFP to any affordable housing developer to build something in Temecula. And we said, look, we've got free land we can give to you. We've got, I think it was like twelve million dollars at the time roughly. To your projects. And we got a whole lot of applications in and a whole lot of nothing that could actually move forward. You know, except Los Haciendas, Vine Creek, Habitat for Humanity Three. Finally, some winners emerged, but I, how, Luke, I don't even remember how many years we've been working on this stuff.
Forever.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is not, you know, and you think about it, you know, here's a city saying, we've got free land and twelve million dollars. Please build us something, right? And this is what happened, right? So imagine, once that twelve million dollars is gone and once we don't have free land to give out anymore. How difficult this process is then going to become? So, you know. So, so what do we do, right? Um, you, you talked about, uh, a, a lot of the variety of bills and legislation that's out there. A lot of this is taking away local control. Right? A lot of it has allowed developers to come in to any city or county and, and nearly have carte blanche access in a lot of respects. To build affordable housing, right? It opened the gates and yet you're still wait, wondering like, so where is that affordable housing? Like where is, as all these bills passed and all of these, you know, gold star solutions were created at Sacramento. What's the result of this, right? Um, and some of these appro- approaches, uh, simply haven't worked. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, you know, and it's been unfortunate, right? Um, but clearly, we've had some success. I don't know why my lights keep going off. Oh, everybody's lights just went off.
Oh yeah, it must be. Uh-huh.
Timer and City Hall that shuts all the lights off.
Get up and jump around.
No.
Care of it. I got it.
We can still see you, by the way, except Luke, I can't see you.
All right. Anyway, so, so let me, let me get to the point here is, how do we create more affordable housing? How do we create workforce housing? How do we do all the things that we're talking about here today? Because we all find it to be important, right? Um, and how do we help Temecula families? Oh, there we go. How do we help Temecula families reach their own goals for, um, you know, for their own, you know, economic, uh, uh, you know, satisfaction, right? I think Ms. Lamont put forward a, uh, like musical chairs. Uh, put forward a practical and pragmatic and sensible approach to workforce housing. I will definitely, you know, I looked at the report. I think what she provided was, was, you know, was good information. And I can't disagree with it. I think Luke, you said that too. There's some stuff that was, you know, uh, uh, very valuable there. But I'm not sure that practical and logical and reasonable solutions are something that California is, is always known for. It was so sadly. And so I don't think that stops us from trying to figure this out. Um, but the, the system is clearly broken. And I still don't understand how massive amounts of new confusing and conflicting legislation fixes it. I mean, it's like tossing a, a shovel to somebody who's stuck in a well rather than a rope. You know, why are we, why are we doing this to ourselves?
We're California.
Cause we're California. And so, so look, there is an answer. I think we have to get creative, right? And that means we have to embrace new kinds of solutions, mixed use, ADUs, mini homes. There's a lot out there that have really changed the housing market over the last bunch of years. We have to recognize, there's actually ten items here, recognize that affordable doesn't just mean low income. We're talking about families, working families, senior citizens, veterans, special needs. And I think we do have to talk about inclusionary and not overlook our local need, which brings me to the next point. I know, Stu, you mentioned, and, and we've all had these conversations in the past before about how we just can't. Create preferential programs for Temecula residents. Why not? Right? I mean, I mean, really, let's, uh, this is fun. Um, why not create programs, right? And I know Peter, I can tell your, um, you know, blood pressure is rising, even though your lights are more stable than ours. You know, why can't we do that, right? I mean, here's the thing is. You know, this, you know, while the, the legislation is challenging for us. There are all sorts of pilot programs and things that get funded. RDA funds are gone. I don't expect them to return. We thought, we saw some glimmers of that, you know, over the last couple of sessions and things. I'm not seeing anything coming forward that's meaningful at this point. But there always seems to be money for pilot programs, right? Um, and so we have, um, we have, I, I think incredible lobbying resources unlike most cities. Uh, we have great relationships and we have remarkable talent, not just here at the city, but in, you know, a lot of the relationships that we have as well. So let's put that to work, right? I mean, you know, if you think about what we did on the I fifteen corridor. And the funding and grants and all that, that we went after and everybody thought we were nuts. Um, requesting fifty million dollars in federal funds and going after tens of millions of dollars more in, in Caltrans funding and everything else. And yet we did it, right? So I, you know, look, let's get creative here and explore pilot programs, work with folks like Habitat for Humanity and others. And tap into that same spirit because I'm sure we can figure something out. But we also have to ensure that the programs we put together are, are not just meaningful in some way, but consequential. Like it hits our targets, but also meets our local needs. And, and like I said, um, I think there's a way to figure that out. And we have to just start that conversation and start getting creative with it because every city is struggling with the same issue, right? Um, the other thing I'd mentioned, uh, going back to, uh, Ms. Lamont's comments and, and others. Um, we have to create ordinances and, and something that we need to start talking about that protect the integrity of affordable housing. Um, not just existing, but future units. And I know that's a challenge and I know it's not an easy thing to navigate that process. However, we have a responsibility to help protect vulnerable populations and make sure that they have a voice and an advocate. And I think the city can, can help figure that out. We shouldn't ever tolerate slum lords, right?
Oh, no.
And that's just, and, and I'm not saying that that's necessarily what's happening here, but the issues brought up at warehouse are, are unacceptable. Um, and, and there's a line between regulatory requirements and meeting those sort of minimum standards versus what's ethical. Or what's just simply human or what's right. And we tend to forget that in these conversations. Uh, I understand that that property is for sale. Um, and I think that's, you know, something we need to talk about, uh, internally. Um, because clearly if they're not interested in this property and they've got one foot out the door. You know, their interest in, in pursuing, you know, these issues and things aggressively, I, I, I'm just not seeing it. And Luke, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I didn't hear that right, but I understand that that property is for sale. Do you know if they are?
It, it's, it's my understanding that it was for sale. I don't know if it's still for sale.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, something we should talk about. Um, and then, and the last thing I would say is, as we start exploring all of this. You know, don't forget we have the Ready Commission and I think, you know, their perspective is going to be incredibly important here. Uh, as we start talking about a lot of the issues. And again, you know, when, when we talk about ready, it's. You know, also that inclusionary perspective where we start talking about our local families and our homes and our veterans and our seniors and. You know, first time home buyers and all of that. And, uh, you know, so, so I think. Look, I, I, I don't want to be overly optimistic about this because I realize the hurdles that we have in front of us and just even having this conversation. But, you know, I, I think there's, there's a willingness by the council, I hope, and an interest, you know, by my colleagues. And I know, Luke, you guys have a remarkable team there, um, to try and tackle some of this stuff. And Peter, you know, it's going to be up to you to help us navigate the, you know, legal issues while we're doing this. Um, and, and let's put our resources to work and see if we can't start to, you know, bite off some, some success here.
We have done some amazing things that were way outside the box.
Right, so.
Other areas.
I think we could do it again. So anyway, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, Luke, fabulous report. And it, oh, Jess, you got one?
Yeah, Zach, did you have something? I know you said you wanted to close out. I knew he had, I knew you, you got something or?
Uh, you know, just closing remarks, but, um, if you want to defer, that's fine. If you want to go, go ahead.
No, no, I, I'm just gonna kind of add something to the end. It's kind of similar, but not so. Go ahead, take it off. Cause I, I knew you had something to say, so.
Thank you. Um, you know, so I wholeheartedly agree with, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Ron and, and the assessment of what's going on, what we can and can't do. Um, like, we can get creative, like, we're Temecula. I, I mean, we can roll up our sleeves. And we can do the hard work. And I, uh, sit on that subcommittee with you. And, uh, I know, I know we're going to be bringing a lot of stuff forward, um, in the future. Um, you know, look, Mount San Jacinto's, uh, opening up, uh, a school here in our city. Uh, you could talk about student housing at the mall. You know, you talk about a housing overlay for that property. I mean, there are so many opportunities. It's just about getting creative and sort of, let us not forget, bringing along the entire community. And we need to let folks know that, um, that their single family home is not going to be raised. And, and, and a fourplex, um, plopped down next to them, right? That's not going to happen, right? So you, 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 you read a lot of these things online and you think, oh my gosh, this, this is going to happen. And you go, well, that's just not true. And we have the space, we have the ability to do some things, get creative, ADUs. And just the fact that we banned short-term rentals added to the housing stock. Again, let's. Again, let's not forget some of the things that we've done to add housing stock to our city. So, look, I'm ready to do the work. We can certainly engage Habitat, Laurel Lamont and her group, and continue to move this forward to really just advocate and, and work for all the residents of our city, because it really is everyone. I mean, it isn't, and I'm glad you pointed out, it's not just low income. I mean, this, these are professional jobs. There are people that are struggling, and we need to do the best we can, and I think we can always do better.
Jess?
Well, again, Luke, I just want to say thanks. I know everybody, it's a lot of work you put in. It was really interesting, especially being new on the council. I learned a lot today, and so I appreciate that information. I'm sure a lot of people who are listening in as well did. One of the things I just wanted to add, if I could, Assistant City Manager, is, you know, having looked over the last couple of months, not being able to look face-to-face with a lot of these people that are calling in, a lot of these moms who are saying, I'm struggling with a lot of these families that are struggling right now. I think seeing them face-to-face or being able to hear their voice and what they're going through is going to make a huge difference for this council to make movements on some things, and for the city to have more of an understanding. So I'd like to see if we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting, if we can have a discussion about opening our meetings to the public and creating more of a face-to-face meetings at this point in time as we move forward. So if we can do that, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, that's great. We have, we have talked about how soon we can get back in the chamber again. It is no fun sitting up here by yourself. We don't have that interaction between us. You know, we can't read each other's body language. We can't make eye contact like we, you know, usually do. I don't like it when the family split up, and so I'm really anxious to get back. And it also lets us get in touch with, you know, our fellow neighbors and residents. And I miss that, too. Some of the best meetings we have are when the council chambers are packed. So anything else? Really great job, Luke. Thank you. And that's going to be something that I'm going to refer to. You know, that's the kind of document that you keep with you in the trunk of the car, so you can refer to it when people ask questions, because they ask good questions. It's not really all that easy to understand sometimes why we can't do so many of these things. So this is just a receive and file, and consider it well-received and much appreciated.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. City Manager? Are you still there? You're not in the dark.
No, I'm running down the hall, hitting switches and keeping the lights on here. So, Councilmember Alexander, message received. I'll put together an agenda item for the council to discuss reconvening public meetings and sort of the best practices and protocols that I can find and identify, and put that on in two weeks for, for the council.
Okay, great. That'd be great.
Nothing further tonight.
Okay. Peter, anything?
I don't have any report tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right, then. Then I will accept a motion to adjourn. I got one.
Again.
Okay, then consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you.
Everybody.
Bye.